Okay, good evening everyone. It is Tuesday, December 12th at 5:30. Official call this morning to over. So we'll do a little call of the beginning and listen to the tape.
Right, Jan Boerjack, District 2.
I said, District 3.
Cardi Cooper, Division 1. Dr. Nancy Perdosa, Norm's Super Center.
And Ross District 4.
And Ross District 5.
All right, and then welcome to all of our guests. Here with the same person as well as the raise us online. Always appreciate your willingness to be in the nation district work. All right, so who are our root of message?
I think I remember from the previous conversations book. Stay engaged, experienced, discover, be vulnerable. Speak your truth, expect and accept non-hospital. And our land acknowledgement. We have a couple of school district acknowledge the land where we teach, collaborate, teach, learn and play. Is the traditional land of the first people of Seattle. The Duane and Muffetwood people passed the president. In honor of gratitude to the land itself and the Duane and Muffetwood tribe. For the public school district, we have the responsibility for the stewardship of this land. And we strive to work alongside with the Duane and Muffetwood people. Who have been living and working here since time immemorial. Before their acknowledgement of the burden of our dedication and systemic justice. All upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies and building of this county and its institutions. To remember that Black and Brown people were born and die working this land against their will for generations of knowledge, the continued contribution of the labor survivors over the centuries to today. Of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, voluntary traffic, forced and undocumented people. In the building of what we refer to as the United States. As school leadership, we best recognize and work against systems that historically and currently impore. And create inequities among the people we serve.
Thank you. Well, we want to invite those who are able and willing to access the piece of. Welcome.
To the plight of the United States of America. And to the republic which has danced, one nation under God. In its own with liberty and justice for all.
Um, well, before we officially approve the agenda. And if I'm not wrong, it's probably out. We have a, I think, special recognition of something that we're going to be making the check for. They don't want to do that now or later?
I thought we just did.
Oh, we can do it.
Oh, you were just showing us. Okay. All right. Um, so, um. Want to take the motion to approve, uh, sorry, agenda? Someone.
Sorry.
Uh, here.
Uh.
Hi. Very perfect. So there's two, a very exciting moment. Which is at the office for our newly elected director. So, um, I'll update my, um, if I don't have. Here, we'll just go, sorry.
Where?
Here. Right here. Or how do you? Nice to meet you. Yeah. All right, so, um, do your own thing, just start repeating after me. My name is Terrell, because I had a hard time in history. So I, Terrance Proctor.
Hi, Terrance Proctor.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
To the Office of School Board Director.
To the Office of School Board Director.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of Director of the Tepel School District Number 406.
And be faithfully discharge the duties of Director of Tepel School District Number 406.
King County, State of Washington, to the best of my.
King County, State of Washington, to the best of my ability.
I mean, we saw that, so congratulations. Okay. Hold on. Okay. I think one of them, let's say we take them together. There we go. There we go. Great. Okay, so before you are officially seated in your seat here. We do want to take just a few minutes to recognize and honor the few board members whose last meeting this is. Who spent, um, you know, a very large portion of the last couple of eight, six years. Um, committed to the, to the work of the district. And I have no doubt that that work will continue in a very different ways. So excited for that, so for that. Yeah, so. So first, an honor. I have clear up that for Reverend Jan Boerjack. Um, thank her.
I, so I just want to say, the minute that I joined Tepel School District. Jan, and Director Morris, and Director Boerjack, former then. Were just so warm and welcoming and honest and having great conversations. Um, I just want to say what I appreciate about Reverend Boerjack is her dedicated service to the community and for always speaking for truth and asking very thoughtful questions. That gets us to be better about how we're really thinking about all of our, all of our kids. All the time, every day. And, um, and I want to thank Director Morris. Because Director Morris has been a long time staff member. The first thing she said to me was, Cassie, I will always, always center staff. And anytime that we talk about anything that I got to provide. Um, and she also is also centers the kids. She is selfless, she, uh, every time I was out of community or in school, guess who I saw? Boerjack. And volunteering, driving up kids, we all have another needs that we actually ask them all of our, um, the selflessness that they do to support our students and staff in a meaningful way. So with that. Um, and if you didn't have them packed, so you can take them out of your room. But I want to make sure I hand you your class. Uh, to thank you for your years of service in this entity, into this district. And we also, uh, we have a little break, correct? For some, we're taking a quick little break. Uh, we're going to serve some cupcakes. And you want to stay? Um, you want to stay? No. Yeah. Well, there were, I never had a trip rate for cupcakes. And I asked the class and we're going to celebrate for a few minutes and then we'll get back to our business. Okay? All right.
Hey, Dan.
Oh, yes, well, especially when you're. Okay. Maybe it's that. Yeah. 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 We're recent. Uh, he gets to take him on a journey. But it's. I mean, I like to know it's.
Right.
Oh, yes. Right. So the brides have definitely already completed the part of the standard.
There's a picture.
Oh, we're coming. For that, you know. You know. So definitely. Checking that you. He did more than it's all right.
Don't be a fool. You got a right now. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm serving. All right. We're just very low.
Yes, thank you. Oh. We're not a lot of the way we're getting sit down. Sure.
Well, that's. See, that's. A little bit smarter.
Yeah. Yeah.
Still has pre-struck.
And I'm not. I think it's one hundred percent. And then a lot of the stuff. Very normal in my life. Right. Sorry. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Also, I don't know. Now, I was spending my. Well, it's. Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Sorry.
Thanks for playing.
Yeah. Now, I have to go. It's the same, the same. Now, I have to speak. Yeah.
That's.
We're going to, yeah, we're going to help. I want to get my attention, but. On the, on the.
Yeah. It's a beautiful. Yeah. It's. On my battery. I know. I want. Sorry. My one grand. No. I was. Oh, okay. I have something.
I mean, yeah. I don't know. Yeah. Was the other. Not a problem. Definitely. My grandfather. I heard. I just got it.
You know. Yeah. Um. So. That. Thank you. Okay. Sad, I, uh, why? Yeah. I was. Do you want to? Right, uh, you're a positive. And you're not sure that they have a bottle. I am in a little bit of a sense. Doesn't, I'm looking at the phone. I can't say that I'm just a little bit anxious when you were writing my dreams.
And, uh, uh.
So.
And we're by.
Obviously, I now depend as. So it's. Kind of being on my mind. What I asked. My, uh, to the final part. So. But, uh, I'm trying to cross the. Yeah. So then, I know you're there. And then, you guys must see I had a few of these. Uh, but the. So there's a. We, uh, starting. I don't know. I'm talking about this. And I'm never saying that.
Very.
And you know, you're very far in, um, everything. So. These are. I try to look at that right. Yeah. What actually. I don't know. And. That's. There's nothing. Uh, they, so.
We're ready. We know. Very long. So you can. Okay.
They, I'm all. Thanks. And then, we'll take some. So I'm. But, uh, the students, we hear when the ceremony. But I should be here too. Yeah, in the scene. And I'm not sure. You know, I'm. I'm. Yeah. They're not too bad. Yeah. So. I think we're. But this. So they only have. So it's. Yeah. I'm. But it's. And it's.
Really.
I'm not.
I'm going to do. I'm.
I don't. I'm. I'm.
I.
Um.
You're right.
Um. I'm. So. It's. Then, I'm having a really long. Yeah.
So. You're. It was.
I'm. Well, I'm listening. And I don't. Actually, yeah, I think it's. Uh, I would like. Yeah. I'm. It's. But I. A lot of. Yeah. And then. Your next, or you should. I don't. Oh. Yeah. Oh, yeah. I mean. Right. So.
I don't. I.
I do that. I just. That's. Oh, yeah. I don't. I don't. That. A lot of.
I probably.
Yeah. So. No, I know. I think, I know. And he saw her. And that's. They got. I love it. Well, I was in a. She's from. Her. And then. You want to. So that will. Uh. And. Oh, yes. She's. I'm. Yeah. Very. My. She had a big. I didn't. She's. You know, they all. Well, I'm just trying to take her. It's like, yeah. I guess. I think. Yeah. You know. When I'm. One. I. Can't wait. Wow. And so. Yeah. I'm. Yes. I was really looking, but. I'm. So. Really. Same. I'm. I'm having. So. You don't mind. Right. And. Kind of all I might need. I'll tell you. So, even if like. So. I'm trying to like. I'm sure we're not really. Yeah. There's. I think. Yeah. I. No, that's young. No. Yes. Oh. Can you? Oh. Oh, that. You don't. Yeah. If you know. I love. The. That. Everybody. Okay. That. I don't. It's. I'm. 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 Say. We're. Which. I have. I'm. In that. You're. You're. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. So. I'm. I could be. Yeah. I'm. So. Yeah. How can. I'm. I'm. But. Yeah. I'm. I'm. Yeah. I'm. Yes. But. Oh, yeah. 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 You. I do. For. All. Okay. Yeah. We're going to. Go down. I know. I'm. And. That's.
Well, I think that was right. On that. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So. So give me your. Thanks. Um. All right. Jeremy, I was. But I mean, I'm. Same. It's. It's. I believe you're not being silent. You're.
All right. I'm sure. You know. One. There. Other. Yeah.
Yeah. It was. Yeah. It was. I'm. I'm. I'm.
What?
What? They're.
All of those. I mean. I've.
And. But now, I'm. I'm. That's. So.
Need, uh, some.
Okay.
Right. So.
And. You know. I'm. Not.
I was like, and then just make them really important. Now.
So. Yeah. I think. Actually. Yeah. We're.
But. I mean. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Beautiful.
I'm.
It's. Yeah. One though.
Yeah. That's. God. Into that. I'm. The. Right. No. It's. You. So. You find this, but. So, yeah, there are. Right. So. You know. When we did. It was. We're going to. Tell you. Thank you. Okay, sorry. Uh, all right. Uh, thank you all for just giving us that space to, um, recognize those people. Um, and welcome. Uh, I feel like they're proctor, very sorry to have you. I'm here. Um, and I also wanted to name our junior student representative, that's Proctor. Uh, is the. Welcome. Welcome. Um, okay, so move on to our public comments. Um, uh, time on the agenda. Um, as a reminder, there are multiple ways to provide public comment. You can use our email or your written comment to be verified on the board. Uh, or, um, if you are online, you can use that raise hand function or write the name of the chat. Let us know that you are the author of the public comment. Um, then, are there any in-person public comments today?
Yeah.
Okay, just a second, uh, for folks that may be looking for that raise hand function. Oh. There is one. Great, all right, so, um, uh, we'll go ahead and recognize, uh, Robin. Awesome. Uh, welcome, Robin. Um, you should be able to unmute now and offer your public comment.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, I didn't realize tonight that we were going to honor Pastor Jan and Edna. Uh, so I'd just like to say thank you so much for all that you've done for the school board, for the community, for our students, for our families, uh, for our staff. We appreciate you very much. Um, and to, uh, Director Proctor, Director Simpson, welcome aboard. And I know that you're going to do great things. And I'm looking forward to the direction we'll be heading. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any one else online? All right, we're going to go ahead and move on then. Uh, as a reminder, there's an additional time with the book comment at the end. Uh, as we are getting a discussion and reviewing reports, uh, with questions or comments, thoughts come up. You're, um, again, there's that kind of thing. Um, so now move to our reports section of the agenda, meaning with our student representative. Yeah.
Um, yeah. Generally, it's really, uh, right. I'm sure you guys have heard of this, that's been a lot of safety concerns. Like with the students, like I've had a lot of people. How about, like, how about, to me, like, there, there's been, like, three or four lockdowns in the past, like, month or so? And, like. So it's kind of concerned, like. How his, like. Is like school like a really safe place for them? And, like. I always, I also have my parents complaining about. This, like, about safety, like. How the system works, like, around how people get into now.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Great, thank you. And, and we put a lot of things on our agenda to make it really easy for people. Um, and so, um, uh, I'm glad we did that very well. Um, and so. I look a little bit of a. So we do actually, how those students feel, that's a picture. Where they're. All right, lost some more to go for. Um, yes, hi, everybody. And I'm not going to talk about safety because we do have two reports coming up on that. And we'll hopefully have a nice discussion. I just want to, uh, good evening, uh, to close that. And community. Uh, as just a reminder, we're getting ready for winter break this Friday. Um, and it's an early release date, uh, for Friday. And then a reminder to everyone that the building will be, the district administration office will be open all next week. And it'll go on December 21st and reopen into the public on January 2nd. But we will be open all hours, three or hours next week. So if anyone needs to come in, I'm happy to do, please do so. Uh, I also want to, for the parents and communities, I want to thank you for reaching out. Uh, if there's any questions or concerns. Um, just letting the community know, uh, if there's a concern in the school building, please, please, uh, connect with your principal. Uh, the principal is the first person of action to ask questions or problem solve anything. And then, uh, if there's something that's unresolved, uh, just to let the community know that, uh, Chief Scott Woodbeck is, uh, over, supports, uh, all the elementary schools. And then I am the person that supports the middle and the high school. So just wanted to let, uh, community know that that is the process we use. And then if there's anything that's beyond our scope, we will collaborate and work together. Um, I want to send a huge congratulations to our own Jorge Torres, uh, pastor, high school counselor, who has been named Washington State Counselor of the Year. And he will be heading to the National American School Counselor Association to be international counselor of the year. And that is something that we're really excited about. And I just also want to, uh, uh, fish it after my condolences. Uh, we lost a sixth grade student, uh, children who had some medical issues. Uh, staff, um, there's a lot of staff in elementary that work with that student over time. Um, and I just want to, we, the Tepel School District sends our condolences. Some staff have been asking for information.[1419.83] Some staff have been asking for information and trying to work in coordination with the family. And when we have that information, we will send that out. Um, and I just reminded the families that we send a monthly newsletter updating all the events that's happening in the district. Um, for the recent equity update, we did have a, uh, training today that, um, all of the leaders in the district. And, uh, we talked about, um, how do we continue to hold up inequities and address that? Um, a focus on others on discipline came up as a, as a, as a thing that we were talking about. And very case in relationships and how we hold ourselves accountable, um, around disciplinary practices in our school and what does that actually look like? Um, and then I have a health update. Uh, there has been an increase of stomach illness at, uh, Tocco Elementary, but attendance has been improving. And since last week, uh, we have one confirmed case of varicella at Foster, but we are working with public health. They've been notified and we will continue to monitor the situation. Um, I also want to let people know, uh, this is unfortunate news. We are, we, uh, we received news that Stone's Pediatrics, who does our vaccinations clinics. And they're postponed tomorrow's vaccination clinic at Cascade View, um, for tomorrow. Um, uh, we will share the rescheduled timeline, uh, and we apologize for the inconvenience. Um, because, and I'll just say, because we learned today that, um, one of their staff members, um, they, the, uh, stepping stones pediatric, uh, suffered an unexpected loss, uh, in their staff. And we, Toccoles School District send or keep the sympathy, um, to the friends and family of, um, Kevi Nijaya, who we've been working very closely with. Um, we have partnered with, uh, Kevi, uh, for a number of the clinics. And, uh, they've done vaccines, immunizations, sports, physical examinations at no cost to the Toccoles community. Um, and, um, we won't miss him really, so. And we, um, we, so we thank everyone for the patience of the reason to that clinic. So it's sorry, it's summer, but we also have some things to celebrate this fall, so. That's it. Any questions, comments for Dr. Jordan? Well, all right, so now we're to, um, Director Woodworth. Um, so, um, this is a time for, um, these directors to share things that they've been working on sort of in the district. Um, we think they're, they're as small as, uh, as you have. Um, obviously, you all have anything to say? That's still running. Uh, so, uh, Director Wilson, uh, can you start with you?
Okay, sure. Um, so I want to, um, the foster theater group had their, um, winter event for a kind of production called Go To Machine, which, uh, at the Performing Arts Center, which turned out to be a very topical subject. It's actually got a kind of an intelligent life living inside of their, their phone, which has a lot of history with artificial intelligence these days. And, uh, so it was, it was very well done. It's, um, it was interesting, uh, production because there was, um, um, six, um, I guess eight people who, uh, just faded in. There really wasn't a star on the show. It was, uh, and each one of them got to, you know, show their, their acting skills. So it was a really good, um, uh, well done production. There wasn't a lot of fancy sets or lights, but the, but the actors were particularly good, I thought. And, um, so I went on Friday night and it was a little disappointing that there wasn't a whole lot of people there. I still think we need to do a better job of publicizing, um, the event, particularly for the folks up in the senior housing projects, which are literally a block away from the theater. And they would be a great, uh, group of folks to get in there, um, not only because I think they would appreciate the, the work, but also because they're voters and, you know, the more connections we can establish in the community with, um, particularly that older adults that may not have, um, students living at home, uh, the better we're gonna have, um, be able to pathfinding law and so forth. And the other thing that, um, brought us, I was sitting in the Performing Arts Center as well is, uh, the fact that we've been working on trying to get our, uh, some pop ratings to the Performing Arts Center. Um, we were gonna hopefully still do that as a result of some of the money that we have with the bond projects. Um, and, you know, we're talking about increasing, improving the lights, the sound, the stage and the seats. And, uh, particularly the lights and sound and staging could, you know, um, improve the quality of the production that our theater group, as well as the groups could do. And so would hopefully increase, you know, interest and increased attendance that coming, coming to there. So, um, I hope that we can, you know, we had trouble getting that project going. I hope we can maybe, and maybe we can divide it up into a couple of different pieces. Um, be a little smarter about how we open grants to get it. But I think it's really important to support our, um, all, actually all the arts programs at, um, Foster High School around the district as well. Uh, I know we have some busy in the school projects going that hopefully we'll be able to get down to be, uh, performed inside of the Performing Arts Center this time. Um, the second thing I went to was the Narno parents would say, I guess this is officially a city project to, um, provide Wi-Fi access to a lot of our students at home. Um, I still would love to hear from our staff, you know, the, uh, aspect of this project. Cause I went up there and talked to the vendor and, uh, there's a number of, you know, I understand they're going to be distributing twelve hundred cum blocks to the students. The question is, you know, how are they going about deciding? I mean, are, are this gonna be distributed in an equitable pattern? I don't know. Um, I understand that there's just gonna be one application on the, on the platform, Google classrooms. I'm not sure, I don't know how that decision was arrived at. And I'd love to hear some feedback from students about whether they, how helpful they would, or, uh, consider that. But, um, anyway, there's, yeah, I still think, after a while ago, um, reading on this, but I still like to hear kind of the details of it. And, you know, how it's being implemented and attendance over three years. And I guess it's under the same city, but, um, obviously impacting our students. So it sounds like it could be a, a really good, uh, thing, but I, yeah, I'd just like to hear a lot more about it. Make sure it's being implemented, uh, well for that, or for. Um, wanted to bring up also since, um, something that we've done in years past, which was occasionally we would have a meeting with the city council. The city council has some, some new members, it's gonna be the mayor. I did the first of the year and I was talking with some of those folks. And, uh, it would be good to, if we had a, uh, school board, city council meeting, I mean, there's a fair number of things. The Wi-Fi project being one of them, but others that I think we have some common interests with. It makes this even get on the same page on a few things. So hopefully we can, you know, maybe set that up for some time early next year. Um, the other thing I wanted to comment was unfortunately I see on our list of, um, staff report this, this week, or this month that we've lost, um, a staff member, uh, who's resigning. And that I worked for a couple of years of, uh, Cascade View in the, in the smart lab or the creative learning lab. And, um, first of all, it's the, the few thoughts, I mean, she was really, um, outstanding teacher and embraced that. Did some great things in technology, I worked with her in robotics projects. And it's gonna be, I think, a huge loss to, to a lot of our students at Cascade View. And, and, you know, it's, what I wanted to think I'm concerned about is, you know, how are we gonna, you know, replace that, um, particular position and, um, because, and will we be able to do it at a kind of a district wide level as opposed to a building site level? It sounded like we're just gonna say, well, okay, the job is out, see if we can find somebody to replace it. Um, the problem is that that's a pretty specialized, um, job. And, and, uh, I hope we can maybe take a more district wide view of that to make sure that the students at Cascade View get, you know, an equal, uh, equally high quality experience with the creative learning labs, uh, as all the other, um, students get. So anyway, that's a concern that I'd like to watch and see how we're gonna, how we're gonna work on that. Cause the students at Cascade View deserve a great, um, experience in the creative learning lab. It's definitely kind of on the way to that. And so, um, they should get the same experience as everybody else. Um, the last thing I went to was, um, kind of I think at the Riro, which is the Washington Education Research Association Convention down in Tacoma. Um, they're primarily focused on a lot of, um, education data, uh, kinds of issues. But they look at a lot of different things as well. They have a really good system on artificial intelligence, which is something that all districts are having to figure out. How to incorporate that into the, uh, district. Um, there's a variety, whole variety of ways to do that, which, um, you know, some of the interesting, you know, the concern with artificial intelligence, we can look at it with, you know, chat G P T or anything like that, just type in, you know, type in a paper on sentence. And then we'll sit back a paper. And the concern is, okay, students to do that and handing that work in, you know, um, that Riro would be. Yeah, so there's, there's a variety of ways, interesting, um, some districts have simply banned the use of those tools. Because obviously it's not, I don't think that's the way to do it all. The second, now I've raised the tools and use them in a way that's going to be helpful. One of the creative things that some people thought of was, okay, you know, have, um, districts basically have a sense, um, to show their work, how they interact with the tools, a bit of a script. Because a lot of the tools you can interact with them, have questions and then iterate through them and get a better response, um, uh, than you would have ordinarily. And so as opposed to just saying, right, do they ever hand in? So the, anyway, there's a variety of ways. There's, there's, um, and it feels like Camigo, which will actually, I guess, might have some experience. So back and forth, assume that, and then question, not give her any answers, but, you know, talk about how we get an answer. So anyway, that's, there's a whole area there that we need to be, um, looking at to figure out how to effectively utilize these tools, um, for then our students. Um, there was the, the, one of the authors of Street Data, which is a book that we've been, um, reading a lot. And this is, there's been a lot of reading. And she was talking, you know, about, you know, the, the idea of, and it's, it's kind of in her books as well. Quite a teacher at fifty, and definitely down in the narrative that used to be the, one of the biggest, um, uh, factor of student learning is how teachers kind of work together to provide, um, great learning experiences for students. We have to do with, you know, how we develop a culture in our, in the schools. And, um, anyway, there's a really good, uh, another step on multi-legal learners, kind of a person over in Othello. Looks like, uh, I was hearing this, uh, Hamper, um, strategies. So anyway, there's a lot of, a lot of good things, um, that came out of that, um, um, conference that we're making soon. So anyway, that's what I got.
Any questions? That's one for her question. Okay, great. Um, uh, just a few quick things for me. Um, I've been in contact with, um, some of the K C S D around, um, some of the professional level opportunities for the board. Um, and we've been here about, um, moving where there's that can be. Um, K C S D has, um, a whole series of things that we've heard of him. Um, and so that would be a great opportunity for us as a, as a, as a new board together, um, to really kind of learn and respond to anything that we're, um, so. We're coming there, um, that's a, she does, or Sandra, um, really kind of look for the, um, the internet for our students. And, um, I think I was actually a little bit surprised just to hear the, the level of partnership that this is in the hand that we actually had. Um, knowing that there's really not a lot of information in this college or the board about network. Um, so I can also, we're kind of, um, uh, if I figure out, we're really going to get a, a partnership of, sharing the board. Kind of a part, part thing, I haven't been there too many, many, so I'm sorry. And it's, um, hopefully coming in, uh, during the year. Um, and then, um, uh, safety, cause now I'm hanging out a lot, um, as I know it has been for a lot, a lot of other folks, students, um, uh, as well. Um, for the, the task force of Asian inclusion, um, as, uh, just wrapped up and we'll be, we'll be back. And here today, and then as well as, um, we have a really, really new meeting with the, um, folks from the U government. It's from, there's in the, um, the SRO work, um, which you already hear about as a long leader. Um, but, um, just that, that put a lot on my mind and, and it would be a lot of, a lot of, I'm not sure it's, I'm not who's up to you. So, um, I don't want to, I'm sure, we have, uh, anything you'd like to offer us, you mean?
No, seriously.
Okay. Um, and we know that you're all right.
I mean, I don't care.
All right, I think we, uh, we probably get back to, uh, our, uh, server.
Yeah, just, just really, um, this Friday is not, it's, it's a regular day, so it ends at the regular time. So just want to prep that. I mean, I actually feel, maybe you're excited.
All right, so I want to, uh, the next thing is, we can defend that?
Sure.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, it is approved. Um, so that's our board to set in. Um, so, uh, the original can be set up there on, um, uh, uh, for those that are to order.
So, um, I think, yeah, there's been a lot of communications, maybe, um, for, um, Director Parker and the, uh, she's been following, you know, but we're, we're not in a good financial situation in this district. And there's a whole variety of reasons for that. But one of the big ones is the fact that the state is not, uh, funding, um, this basically higher system on, on what I, what I call a needs based funding system. So funding on where the student needs are and pushing money there. And because of the fact that we're in a district that, you know, has a high reintroduce, I'm really high, uh, you know, you know, already higher degrees, higher than, um, such a good term, the students experiencing homelessness, all those things are high fees. Those are exactly the areas that the student that the state is not funding, which is part of the reason, you know, that we're in, um, the, uh, situation we are. So, um, what I'm proposing here is, uh, put together, uh, a letter to our state legislators, uh, the, uh, district legislators, uh, this, which is, um, Senator Alcoa and representatives, Acme and, um, Perkless, to, you know, make them aware, and we're not the only district doing this, a lot of districts that are writing this thing to do. But we want to make them aware of before they go into setting, uh, this January of, um, you know, our concerns and, and some particular things that they could do to, uh, uh, help us out here. So, so I put together this letter and, um, uh, then he was running off on, um, the district letterhead. So what I'd like to do is whoever feels, um, like they can, uh, in terms of board and whatever else can sign this, whether that, that we can send to them and make sure that they're aware of it. If we can, we can send other folks, um, you know, in the page and, uh, or, um, and see if they'll sign on. That's great. And to do that later and then send another copy, but here with the board, they could, that's great. I just want to be sure that, that our participants are well aware of this situation before they go to setting. So it's, it's on and on. So anyway, anybody has any, any thoughts or, um, this? Otherwise, um, I'll just, uh, get a creative version and whoever wants to sign on it, consign it at the end of the meeting. And then I'll make sure that it gets to the, to the letter.
We need to make sure our comments, um, I'll do a little kind of support, um, I felt very thoughtful in the morning, taking the paper, taking the time to drop that.
And for the, for the, I know some of the staff, the family conference is pretty complex. And I'm familiar with all these things that are required of you. And I'd be happy to, you know, discuss them in the morning if you want, you know, that would be great. Um, I, you want to, if there's, the big thing you want to announce or?
Well, this final one will go right in the, yeah, it'll be all, it'll be great.
Okay. Yeah, if you just study that, I'll have to, are you good? Okay.
All right, great, thank you. Um, okay, so we'll now move on to your questions, only your locations. Um, so either of these are questions that, um, the board has been meeting, that are asking your asked questions. So we're learning, we need to respond to that, um, to know if there are any additional questions, um, that may come up. Um, we need to kind of fill out a vacuum, um, it seems to come up. So starting with that, a grant update, um, are there any additional questions, uh, there?
Yeah, um, my question revolves around the adaptation program. Are we, uh, so this is a, uh, a fifth grade camp program that we've been, had for years and then, um, stopped doing it because of COVID. And we don't, we have not seemed to be able to have started it back up again. So what is the, what is the, and since that, we should have funded entirely out of our own district funds. But, uh, during the interim, when the board agents actually recognize that this actually is the valuable program for a lot of students. And so they have any grants available to cover at least some of the costs. So I just, I just like to know what's, uh, I don't see it on, on here and the indication was we not apply for it. So what is the plan for the outdoor, you know, camp this year? Are we doing it, not doing it?
So I actually have a very few teachers and some of them would like to do it. And some still are not quite there. Uh, I actually had a meeting with the, the grants theater, um, and they got sick, so they canceled. So we're rescheduling the meeting. And I want to hear from them, what are all the opportunities, uh, that they have? And then we're gonna be working, I think it's Joe Cermaccio is the one who's sort of helping us notice and then figuring out what our next step is with them. But they're meeting with me and I think.
Will you save grants for your?
No, so it's the outer education, uh, person who owns the, yeah, so I actually had a meeting, it's been a little broken up. And it's actually, that's probably even canceled. So, uh, but we, I think we have scheduled, uh, the, the Thursday in January, is that correct? Yeah, so when we get back and make sure we're scheduled our way to talk this. So we do have a plan to discuss options for our students.
I know this, the, the camps, the one that we've used, the new chapter camp, um, they book up pretty far in advance. So if we stall around a week on what happened, so anyway, yeah, okay. That's the program and I don't need, yeah, they're really current leaders a lot, you know, teachers, but also, uh, students and parents are very supportive of this program. And we'd like to get it back and it's, I think, going on, um, after all, the, the program, I'll leave it there.
Who, there was a, was Sarah being really interested in this report, and this is for, um, ever, you know, we've been talking a lot about the safety and all the different facets of safety. Has there been any, um, have you looked at any grants that would help us prioritize the, the, um, board's safety? Everything about particularly learning and help, social, emotional support, um, things like that?
I think we have, you know, looked at, I don't know, there's a few grants that are available to us who would say, we've, we've been going through and looking through everything. I think we look like for everything that they offer. So in terms of safety, I think we've got us, and just look and see. And we're actually, I think I actually looked at the national, because we have federal government at a ramp. But I think we have to be really clear what we're actually asking for. And that's, I think, what we're not there getting, for the government, that I want, the other ramp is exactly what we need. So, all right, great.
What other questions for me? Okay, next is our school safety report.
So, um, I don't know, here's, here's my, okay. But one of the questions that I was looking at, they tried here and talking about lockdown. So in talking to the, some of the teachers, um, there seemed to be some confusion about lockdowns in terms of, um, you know, we have, I guess, what's it called, a modified lockdown and a total lockdown. And what exactly are the procedures? My understanding of it is, you know, do you, if you go into a lockdown situation, you're locked down then, you know, you're certainly gonna lock down the springers of the campus. And then there's another lockdown. Well, and then if you lock down, that's a classroom level, there's literally a lot of your door. And that would be, it's very, it was an active shooter or something, I can't tell, or somebody's been coming in. So is it clear that, I mean, uh, there's some of the things I thought it wasn't necessarily clear. You know, uh, if, uh, you know, the, the, uh, system, the announcement, if we do a lockdown, you know, what kind of lockdown and what are the parameters associated? And I know there's some confusion and some people are a little mixed about how you actually lock the door from the inside, you know, sometimes. And I know that was a issue sometimes in Seattle, you know, the school. And so I just, I just want to make sure that we're, that we're, you know, everybody's clear, the staff is clear on all the things. Cause it did sound like that, that's sort of where we are right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. We know that our, you know, buildings have done a lot of work to put together the plans as best it can covering the elements that are in the slides about the requirements. Um, uh, drills and how many times per year, what it entails. But this feedback is helpful. I think, I'm thinking ahead, next steps, what I can do is just talk with our principals and find out what they're hearing from their staff. But what is still uncertain? I think just something we could do is provide, just like even a little cheat sheet, uh, we'll ask, here's a key words. What's the difference between, you hear a lot that different words, typical like, for example, I think one question was, what if there were a suspected active shooter? That is the same as a total lockdown. So because provided, like I said, well, summary sheet that could be. So, because provided, like I said, well, summary sheet, it could be. Provided for, you know, that could be for families too, just so everybody knows what this means, so since they won't talk about it, uh, parents would know what that means. So I think that's triggered, um, I think it would make that clearer.
Uh, it it, 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 okay, here, so this is kind of, you know, as of today, very familiar person today. And then here in this, or this is very concerning about why this isn't, because it's once on one mistake. You know, I mean, one thing that happens and it seems like people get their act together after that. I want to be way more proactive in doing this as a district and so. How we can get to that quickly, I think it's a benefit for everybody, you know, there, especially the safety, the safety portion part of it. So how do we get to it quicker? How do we get, um, the, everybody on staff on board with what should happen and the keywords that are much quicker than? I don't want to wait, you know, I mean, for a month or wait for the next incident, we already have, how many lockdowns have we had this month, you thought? Three or four already, you know, that's there and if the staff are uncomfortable at that time or don't know what to do, if we have a major issue. You know, like somewhere like you're saying, how do we, how do we increase our staff awareness and how do we get that information out so that we are on point? Because this is the world that we live in right now, obviously what we're seeing is, so how do we do that?
Right, well, one important factor to note is, um, our district safety committee that is led by our human resources executive director, Mr. Fergonoff. And they meet periodically to review, it's the same kind of, you know, questions, the whole point is to talk about maybe what's at current. Like, social consideration, maybe it wasn't even an issue three months prior when they had that before and refine the practices. And provide information to go out and back to schools and hit the training out every, whatever is different, new protocol, so that's part of it. And I think also just, like I said, you know, this is a set of program that this is up to take care of right away.
Yeah, so how we, so, so, you guys speak periodically, how often is that?
I think.
So by monthly and so then.
We're meeting this Friday.
So this Friday, so, so you guys come up, you create a policy or procedure needs to happen and how quickly is that, and we're developed the staff. Just trying to do it, how, how fast does that occur? It needs to be, it's, it's not in there where we don't like it to be and so that's what I think that we need to work on.
But what we can do is we can send an email to the, I mean, we can have, maybe work on communication because. Modified lockdown and there's language from the state, exactly what that is. And I think it's just reminding everybody, because there has been training in the past, what it is, what it isn't. And then we can do that, so we can send something out to everybody, reminding them quickly, we have uh tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We can send out something by tomorrow, uh, reminding everyone, asking principals to review it, to check in with staff. And then we can then make sure that our standard meetings have something in place. Um, I, you know, it's one of those things, I was a teacher, you know, and. You get trained, you review it, and just like anything else, months, years go by, you don't have to do it and then it happens. And it's not the lack of training, but it is, we have to frequently remind people. It was like when we had similarly the incidents with the showalter in November. Um, we sent a letter to them after a couple incidences where we're having an increase in social media. Threats that were actually impacting showalter community, so we sent a letter to our community, we sent it to the parents. And making sure that they have the resources, that they can talk to their children about. If you make a threat on social media, that is a threat to the community and that there's this preliminary action, so we can do that, they help. And it subsides at at showalter, uh, so, but if it's all staff, they're feeling nervous, then we can make sure it's a reminder about what is the expectations. And if it's specifically around lockdowns versus modified versus all, you know, and then just reminding the principal to use that language when they call it. So we can do that, we can do that.
So for grants, so when we said, how do we clear safety? We need to identify what we need, it sounds like one thing, we're gonna identify for a grant, like, or, you know, trying to get funds there. I love typical school district to be the gold standard of, you know. Like, where the, where the other districts come to to say, how have you guys handled this? This is how we should do it and they can get back to their schools to do that, that would be the very best and I, and I'd love to see. You know, or I'll even, I'd love to come to a meeting and see how it works and the different things, so I might understand it, would be great. Um, please give me an email, I'd be happy to do that, but I think this is, uh, this is super important. And so I'd love to see how, um, it moves forward quickly, would be great.
I think you're direct, so you, uh. If you're not very worried about pay, how, what's the timeline to get up to speed? Uh, but I also, from, from tweaking to the minimum, but there's also a timeline to get. Practice and then with the technical, and I think that's important, but I think it's uh since urgency, well, I left. The office today, I met with, uh. Miss Parker, there's a partner at that work and she had the same sentiments, uh, usually is that. They're on that awareness that will be retaliation on what they went through before. Uh, and so if the staff is not comfortable with the verdicts and how to respond, what the response is. There may be already growing that we're not prepared to respond, so I think it's, I just want to echo. That sentence was explained to me by asked question, okay, as a new board, I can help. He explained to me clearly, this is what they went through the last few days. And the buzz in the community is that there may be a retaliation, so we're sitting, we're not trying to figure out what we're gonna call it, if it's comfortable. And keep our line of what A B C and D D. As Earl Trump said, we can look up, we don't have time to practice. We don't have time to, so I, there's a sense of urgency, uh, and contemporary governance. That they're on, and it was a brother Alex came in and said, hey, we don't want to say it like that. So we need to get this done and, and I guess my other question is how. Time for him, uh. Clarifying what it was. I, I'm certain they are, but how long does it take when we get that clear from the admin going to the train to that, I mean. That's one thing, so I don't even decide what the verdict is and what it means and now comes time to say or say. But the people who, um, said we're not sure what you mean by that. My, how soon does it go to you? You were all very ready to try to.
Right.
All right.
Well, that is, like, there's the required and the non-required, so just so everyone knows, that is the minimum standard for the state, every school. And every principal needs this, drills, so one drill come on. You can do more, you can do more, so as you see, there's three drills for lockdown, um, there are listed. Yeah, no, those are all the drills, you have to at least cover minimally three drills. For a lot, so one drill for state per month. And, and so any of those, but you have to have minimal three for fire evacuation, three for lockdown, one drill for school mapping with the system. And one drill for shelter in place, one for a quick drill. And so that is the minimum, so as you see, that doesn't all equal ten, they do equal nine, so you can add another drill for ten months to cover. So that is, that is led by the principal and the admin team and the safety team. And so that is where, when you say lockdown, that is a requirement, but that is breaking down to specifically like the different types of lockdowns and the. This, the principals typically do review these protocols with their staff on an annual basis. So now, knowing that, information, this is something we can follow up with the school leaders. And just review our protocols and make sure that all of this, and I do know for a fact that principals have done the drills. I know that you have done them, I know that you have done them, I just received that information. Um, and it could be that, um, modified or that before using different language, that we're using to get clarity on what the language we need to use. But that is the requirement by the state that every school is responsible for doing and conducting every month.
Right, and I can, just real quick, another thing to stop going on about, so I know that it's a kind of a big deal to get the kids, you know, moving, doing your thing. I don't know if they're staff days or mornings or half days, would you judge one of the drills with the teachers and the staff there and then they can do it so that they can practice without having to manage all the kids? You know, there and the, and the young people that they're doing, that might be an idea also. Uh, on, to piggyback that, I am not sure, do we have, um, officers in these schools anymore, is that? Is that?
We have security, so our middle school has two security, uh, personnel and then our middle school has one. Um, and that's part of the review for safety that we're going to be talking about, because that's a, yeah, that was a conversation. Because I, there's been requests for additional security and then there's all sorts of requests for SROs, it's all part of the. The system that we have to do and we're looking at budget, what actually should be our priority when we're making decisions around safety. Uh, because if we add something, then we have to make sure that we're thinking about the long term impacts of that and also the physical impacts of that, but. I think, I mean, safety is a critical thing that we want to continue to find, so, but what it looks like, and the positive, that can get, that grants. This, you know, certain things made for certain things to be even talking about. I'm curious, so obviously, or the feelings about just, um. Not really safe, right, in school, I'm curious about how it goes to feel about the response, um, to these incidents that have happened.
Are you thinking like a deep breath with staff, is, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I'm curious, like, you know, you know that there's kind of a, 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 a higher level of awareness and anxiety and. Um, with all these incidents, there was a response that happened, right, and so I'm curious. How staff are feeling about the responses that they take, was it too slow, was it fast enough, was it, you know, what were the things that came up? On any response of the incidents that have happened?
Uh, but, yeah, a couple things, I think it's, well, I guess we're, um, staff of schools that did not have the incident there. I, I would guess that their first question is, uh, or their interest is how quickly were they informed of what's happening and where? And does it affect their campus or not? That's, and then they want to know when it's resolved, those are the biggies, if you're a principal or a staff member in a school, you want to know that for the baseline. So that's what we try to, you know, we are communications director and others, to get the word out, as soon as we have something firm to share with people. So, um, and otherwise, I know when, um, principals and school staff need their drills, they typically either right after or shortly, like the next day maybe. Do a review of how to go, staff say, you know, they time it, such like evacuations, say, eight to four minutes, say, we have to get down in two and a half, or. They know what their goal is based on the facility, how quickly they should be evacuating, if they do lockdowns. They practice going on the doors and make sure you don't open the door for someone, as they say, let me in, things like that, so you, and then you do feedback of someone, if some people. Forgot, wrote the really, review and say, we changed whatever wasn't done according to the safety plan.
So I'm curious, Alex, um, do you, this student's saying that, um, that it was enough, if they communicated why the lockdown happened and what happened?
Yeah, today, this, this morning I went to my present period, they're, security guard.
Okay.
And they're, they're about a phone calling around, like, they're talking about what happened.
Okay.
Student coming, so our high school management came to interact with students. And like, you know, they're saying, because they get reasons to do it, right, because someone opened the door.
Okay.
The students are always supposed to come to the front, they're not, they're not, they're excited for it.
Okay.
For a really education, they're, 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 anyone. Um, yeah, the security guard is certainly, and like, really, they're down on people who open and restrict students, thank you. It's like a possibility you can suspend and maybe that, so.
Okay, so it sounded like that communication went pretty well.
They met talk to every classroom, so when we, so when the incident happened on Friday. The, the security staff immediately, so we're talking about it, it's nothing happened on Friday on our high school, or our, our high school. So it, the lockdown occurred, it happened within, I think it was, it was laid out, it was communicated and it was lifted within thirty minutes. The incident itself, security was there when they first got alerted, the two security guards. Um, they, uh, dealt, they notified the, because it was from outside the district. They notified, uh, the, the typical police department who also was interested in this group, uh, because they had other incidences in the city. Um, they, uh, went immediately and actually found the students that were, uh, within the building that were accidentally let in. Uh, and then there was lockdown because it was all handled within pretty short time that lifted right away, so then we communicated, the principal communicated. Uh, quickly to let families know what happened, uh, and then in response to that, we actually then, um. Uh, a sudden another communication today, so the security was doing the investigation, they hadn't completed it till today, they notified me yesterday about all of the pieces. Um, we decided to send a secondary communication out to all the families in the middle school and high school. Um, because of the fact that we heard that students were, rumors were not being said and students were not sharing things and. There was, uh, rumors about retaliation, although at the time, let everyone know on our investigation that that wasn't a credible threat. In terms of that threat, but so we wanted to reassure family and we did ask the typical police department to help us for this week. And give us some additional support, uh, in monitoring both the middle and the high school, so those are the actions that took place. Um, immediately after the lockdown that happened, and so that's all of them, and we say we have twenty four communities, that's a lot. It's a lot, but, so making sure we frequently communicate with families along the way, not only that we handle the situation, but we are aware of the. Of the, of the rumors of the, of the, of the issues and then making sure that we're standing out to the middle school because it's what. You know, brothers and sisters and all of that, and we want to make sure that, um, all the families know that we are monitoring this pretty much, and they are on, when we say security is on high alert. They are monitoring everything very closely and watching everything, uh, and the principal as well, and the admin team, so, um. But I just wanted to share with everybody, that's what happened with the recent, this recent incident, so I feel like it was a long time ago, but I'm sure it's. I think it was Friday, it wasn't Friday, it's Monday, so, anyway, it's kind of long, that's all I will say. So I will say that in terms of responsiveness in all of the incidences that we had with lockdowns. The response has been pretty swift, um, the security staff do communicate, they connect with us downtown, we try to immediately, uh, communicate with families. Uh, send letters and notifications and then students, those things, sometimes it's hard because we do have to make sure that we're, uh, like to be able to delay. I think it was like five minutes or something, but it feels like the kind of work. Calling, you like this, uh, we can send this hour of related to families and, uh, so we try to make sure that apparently everyone's included. But there's a social worker, so potentially also the response is, if there's trauma or if there is a reaction to something, making sure that social workers are also available. To support, so I will say, the responsiveness, that is our goal, to always be immediately respond, immediately communicate and then re-communicate and re-communicate as needed. And then take care of the student needs and also reassure staff and make sure that we're doing that, and then when we find out additional things. Then immediately force correct, and so, um, those, but this is all information, every incident is different. I will state that, it's not like every incident is different, right, but, um, I think that there's been, uh, I, I, I was absolutely impressed. With Foster and Showalter and all the schools that had to deal with something, uh, it's been pretty incredible to see. How quickly they wrap up the situation, um, and we will always, always, I think we are our own worst critic. And we will continue to improve as we go, because the last thing, I agree, the last thing I want is anything that happened, we take it seriously.
And I agree with you a hundred percent, that's why if, if I could be involved with one, I'd love to get an email about that, because it sounds like this incident was students that got in the building. That were after someone specifically, what I'm talking about is somebody's coming into the building, went into the building, it's after everybody. Right, or anybody, and so I want to make sure that that doesn't happen, because, and I do applaud that the security were there. You know, and that it did happen, but in a different situation, like I said, you situation different, you know, looking at, you know, being some other things that are more recent, these things are happening, so I want to make sure that. Where we are prepared as a district and a school, however that looks like, yeah.
One other area was, uh, kind of exploring, so, so we got fifteen lockdowns, I guess, in the last, last year or so, and. I said that, I'm gonna, I'm wrong, but most of those lockdowns are probably initiated by the typical police department based on. Activity in the area, which doesn't necessarily relate from inside a school, but throughout that's going on around. Which is, uh, which is, um, good, except, the one concern I have, is I think. We have a situation, I think, that has been used where, so. You know, I think it's the only district that's kind of on the edge, or the middle school is on the edge of the city. And so, I think there's some activity that King County Police is going on, you know, with helicopters and. Apparently, I posed a question to the Capitol Police. And he said, well, we don't, I mean, I think we've got a good amount of communication between the district and the police and the Capitol Police Department. But they, he kind of, well, we don't, you know, King County Sheriff, we don't, we don't necessarily tell us about that, and so. Then, you know, everybody. Then, you know, everybody has to give, they sort of, there was. And so they do, you know, it turned out maybe to be an unnecessary lockdown. I mean, obviously, it was the correct call because it's the information provided, but. You know, lockdowns are very disruptive of school activities and everything and obviously, we obviously. Always have this, you know, uh air on the side of safety, but. You know, we can, and so I don't know if there's a, there's pretty kind of a hole in terms of the King County is right on the edge. You know, if it was something and they don't tell us, then I think we got a hole. So maybe, I don't know whether that could be pursued through, you know, Chief Beaver. Or in our police department or, you know, talk to the sheriff. But anyway, that's the other, you know, we. We try and kind of, you know, minimize lockdown, obviously it's up there to be safe. All the time, but at the same time, it's not like there may be a few holes in our before we can cross that city.
Now, I also wanted to add on, like, um, if the teachers are not fully aware of the procedures. Uh, like, of any of like emergency procedures prior to a lockdown, then like probably even less students are. So like, I feel like after the people are fully educated, it's important for the students to know too. Because like students, it might be like a part of the building, like they can't, they can be facilitated by a teacher. And like, they might not know if they're in a lot of a lockdown and they're still walking the hallway, if you're in the classroom. Or like, you know, the teacher's got to be young students, so come in the classroom, because like they already do the technology, so like. That would be more efficient, so like, everybody like safe room and like in a vision a lot of time. So like, I feel like other than practice lockdowns, I feel like a better idea to have a universal curriculum with my offhand as well. So that they know a difference, kind of modify it, block it out. And like find it so that you know exactly what you, so. That I just make everything more efficient and if having that. Like, for example, like after the second or third lockdown, my CTE teacher, Miss Mizony, like you're an early release patient, she had an assignment, she had like. A slide filled by a mini unit, like explain a different thing that the lockdown, modified lockdown, what you do in each situation. And then she also had like an excitement attached to it, also a little form, where you like answer questions, like if you're in this scenario, what do you do? So like, I feel like that would be like a really good idea, so that I can like, that can be embedded in a person. Like in the form of.
Correct, yeah, cool, cool.
Thank you.
Right, uh, well, any questions to put aside around this? Thank you so much. Um, next is the accreditation topic.
I think. It's one of your topics. I understand the rationale besides around choosing to now do this, I think. You know, this is common in a system, you know, some new leadership comes in, but I think it stops and starts. Especially for this particular um project, which is, you know, like things, I think it it can be taxing for our staff. I know there's a lot asked of our school teams last year to get this going. Um, eleven thousand dollars is not a small amount of money um to have spent already um on this process. Um, so I'm curious about um. And and you and I have this network to pretend this story, okay, but it like where's the eleven thousand dollars worth of how much we would need to spend in the same year process?
My understanding is it's about like eleven to thirteen thousand for or for each time, each event. So it's a matter of a team, but and I see since the state doesn't require it, they used it when they required, they had a list of. Companies where you could go to the district and get a contract with a company and have them come do the onsite audit. Give report and they give you the official newspaper, whatever they do at the end. So now the state doesn't have a list because they don't require it. They don't, I don't think they want to say they're endorsing one or the other because it's, it's, this isn't, I think they deal with anymore. So it would require us to go find uh company or companies to request proposals. And review them and uh then find the money to do it, hire the company, plan the deal. Now, when you administer at the school, it's take staff time, takes a lot of time for the principal to kind of coordinate. Uh, because they come interview people, so we need subs to cover the teachers that can step out and be interviewed. Uh, about the program, review materials. So it's, you know, uh, hours of time for the teachers, which is pretty much everybody. Part of their time with the principal, coordinated. So it's doable, but it's um just being aware of what the cost is and people, time and money.
Sure.
And then what do we get out of it?
So I guess I was looking at the question, I think even last year, that was all the very process. So what has changed differently in last year and this year as far as like the states up in the offensive contract was similar or something? Should we move that process? Um, and again, when you say eleven thousand dollars, for instance, like or fifteen ish, um, so what? Cause we got some accreditation, trying to watch here, didn't we? No, we just started it. Okay.
Yeah, my my question is, so we started this up here, it was not required either. So we didn't do it because it was required. And the question I kind of have is, is exciting a bunch of districts that are um. Who are not engaging in the accreditation process. So is this something that's kind of dying out? Because when I look around, most of the, most of the high schools, particularly high schools. Have accreditation and after searching through the records, apparently we found software was a kind of good as well. Uh, if it was searching, but um is this, is this a process that is is kind of dying? And so if, you know, and the question becomes, my question about, you know, how does it affect students? So if, are there any colleges that look at students, students' background, background and say, oh. This is from an unaccredited high school, therefore we're going to downgrade, you know, that's what I want to know about. Does it affect the students? Does that happen?
Except with the app, does it rule out a different specific university for students, which ones require that, which ones don't?
It's part of, whereas they have money, then if they, that's.
Yeah.
And I think not just in state, or if you just like, you know, if you only have state, where they look at those things, where maybe accreditation is required.
We talked about this at length, so um first to go back to the original question. The original money that was set aside was for the original, it's almost like the pre-approval process. It certainly gave you ready to say, if we now can spend more money and go to a full accreditation process. Which would actually be more than double the amount. So it would be, I think we, when we looked at it, I think it was around twenty five to thirty thousand dollars. Which didn't include any of the time of labor and traditional other activities at least. So that's that. Um, the other thing I will say is, are we actually aligning all of our courses and all of our credits for our students for a diploma? To the state, which is aligned, which, you know, all of the work to do with all the, so our diploma in itself was a, is is a guarantee. That these are all state approved classes, these are all accredited courses. And our student, when they walk out with a diploma and they're following in the graduation pathway, that is acceptable for any university in the nation. So the accreditation process was something that was for a long time, that a lot of districts did. Um, and a lot of districts have once, but it isn't, it it hasn't been a barrier to students accessing or getting into colleges nationally. So um, so because our diplomas and all of our, the line, the the line of the standards, the pathways, all of that is sort of for. Saying we are, uh, our work is accredited through the state in this way, right? But it hasn't been a barrier for students accessing. Anything in terms of getting accepted, we have students to go to Ivy, all of these things and um. Go to the University of Washington, go to our local colleges, it has not been a barrier. And I just wanted to give you the information about the other districts around the surrounding, it's not all of those, but those are ones that I checked in with personally. Already going through this process, the other one, we can sort of kind of change. That I don't know if it's a guiding practice, but I do know that. What did their questioning and asking themselves, is it worth to go through this hugely rigorous process when we already have a diploma that is saying. This student has completed all of the state requirements uh to to actually enter into a college or university. So, so are these states or uh districts only not option right now, especially with the cost? And it is a huge process, by the way, having done it myself, and I'm a high school principal.
I think back, looking back, schools have been in education for, you know, a couple thousand years. They, I think it was the mid nineties when state standard, learning standards, it became, it used to be still learning objectives, that's all of it, then it became student standards. And before then, accreditation was just the norm because. Anyway, as a teacher, when you plan lessons or as a principal, there, you just design what you think comes next. There was no uh specific target you had to aim for. So now that's different, we've been for used to state standards now, teachers work very hard to design their. Yeah, so that's what lessons are expected to be aligned to. So I believe I would interviewed in the university deans or presidents, but I believe they're saying. Okay, if everybody comprehensive schools have to teach to this, you know, third year civics, whatever, what means they've. Um, met proficiency or better in these certain standards, and you have diploma, you need to meet all the standards in all the required areas. So in a way that would cover, like Dr. Pedro said, that covers what would have been um in accreditation. As a visit, they come and look at your materials and see does it align to a standard and they already are.
Okay, so the first discussion, this was strictly around the high school getting accredited and stuff like that's. Not really admitted out. At the time, the decision was actually expand this to be accredited. Uh, all of our, all of ours would be, and and the different would be, then the thinking was that. You know, this would be a process to get to a higher quality school improvement plans.
Yeah.
And so then the question becomes, you know, what's, if you're, if you're not going to use this process to do that. You know, and so you're saying we're going to use um. It was a school improvement, okay, and creating work? Because we, I, you know, I mean, sadly, a number of school improvement process, you know, presentation, that's kind of tends to be all over the board.
Yeah.
And so, but what you're saying is there's another process that you feel like is more economical and will get us to the same point.
Well, we have four schools that are already part of the state school improvement process, right? They're already part of it. Um, and that is part of really um all of the assessment and all of the scores. We have actually asked our high school, they're the only ones that don't, they're at different levels. And so they also are aligning. They already just created their school improvement plan in alignment with the other plan. So we have a blank tablet for all the school improvement planning. Since we have an OSPI coach that is working with all of the principal on school improvement planning, and so they're meeting regularly, aligning the work. And then we are working with all of the schools to align their school improvement planning processes with our strategic plan. So adding another plan or another process, I would like all of that, we felt that this time was able to be costly. And actually not, we're trying to work on all that alignment work with all of our schools to the work that we set forth. That we said mattered in typical the school district. And not to say that we can't revisit it as district-wide accreditation process, especially when we're physically solid. But at this point, we felt it was really important because the strategic plan is new, this new school improvement planning process. There was KI coach, all of these pieces, entities, we want to make sure that they are aligned, that they're working, and actually, they're doing really well.
Yeah.
Uh, with uh meeting, they're aligning to all of the standards. If you look at all the school movement plans, you'll see the alignment to the strategic plan. And so that's the work that we're focusing on, and it's based on our students and our data and um the common course, so.
Okay, and I think that's kind of, because with this originally planned, I think we have like two schools that are in that coming.
We now.
Four and the process is simply well over and so.
And last is volunteer, and so they, I went to their leadership team meeting. They actually aligned the work, they created the plan and all the work that we launched in the August, um, kick off. When we got the triangulation work between the the schools, they have been sitting with their leadership teams and developing their school improvement plan.
Okay, I think this, yeah, this whole discussion is very helpful, totally, as opposed to, you know, we're not doing it because it's not required.
So do we have, are we able to see the plans? Yeah, directly one, and then you have obviously checks and balances and goals that we're trying to reach along the way.
We have all, we have metrics aligned that we've identified. Uh, we actually are actually collecting data for the new year on some of the metrics that we've identified. Uh, the board uh approved the metrics and the plan in August.
Okay.
And so I'm happy in the next memo to just send the lead so that you can look at it. And then uh one of the things that I asked uh uh Mr. Baker, who's the executive director of CT and from the department of technology is. To help us come up with, I thought my hope is by spring, some type of dashboard. So that you can actually, you can have more access and can see the progress over time. And the strategic plan is there, it just got uh launched, so it's there for the next two to three years. Um, but again, the goals and the methods are aligned to go to school for the planning process. And I'm going to add you to nod your head. But work, work, I will say the principals have been so engaged and the first, and they've been working on it and um. But we will make sure to get you all the comments at this point.
Thank you.
Yeah, one of the things that we do in our sessions is um is uh. Well, we had two, we've done this with our, um, we then we had a complete of a strategic plan. And then a few schools have come in and talked about the university. Um, as it relates to that strand, um, the strategic plan, so we're really trying to dive in. So so people um did issue the game, and then we will, we'll be, like, January, we have a medical special work of the group for that and. Um, and see that, and then definitely, there've been, we make, there's evidence definitely that there's more online than any of the things that's happening. Um, across the school, but you know, it was a big, it was a big priority um going into this year, so um, yeah. Thank you very much. Um, next is the alignment and design of the session.
Well, first, I wanted to, uh, so every year I went to a session where the um, those guys talk about the state learning standards and. Uh, so we're going to do state learning standards next year, actually. And he was kind of with arts, math, and science. And so um, as we're thinking about um particularly, you know, in a box, we need to break it. We better keep in mind that. And one of the things that was, and I was in on the session, one of the things that was interesting. So the English language, well, the overall, one of the overall emphasis was to reduce the number. So people aren't going to have so many standards. And so a lot of districts have already gone to power standards, extension standards, whatever you want to call them. And crunched it down a little more. So that's going to be one of the emphasis in the state is reviewing all these standards and then. And then, and the, in particular, the English language, um, they're going to be adding to new areas. One is digital literacy and media literacy, which are really important to this uh thing. And so. Math is going to be still a lot based on the same common core, and so, and science on the uh national. Whatever it is, M G S, everything, but anyway, the other one, the other thing um. Is that they're kind of emphasizing was the fact that, you know, these, these uh standards. We need to take a kind of holistic view, and there's not this teach English language before, and English language, but teaching in math, that's teaching, you know. Teach math and P E, you know, all these kinds of integrating all these things. And I'm not sure, we haven't really had this discussion about it for a while. I don't know how well we're doing that, but that's going to be the other thing, which makes a whole lot of sense to me, because then you can start to get more engaged students and. And look at holistic problems and did everything together. And so anyway, it just passed that along in a certain way, I believe. Um, and I, I don't know, if you guys probably have this, their, the state's plan for how they're going to be, they're going to be saying over the next year and. And also, you know, we have a bunch of standards, I'm not sure how well we're, you know, we have this. State standard computer science and art subject studies, financial education, world language, all those things are out there. How well we're implementing them, I don't know, but I think particularly, I think I'll leave the education one. Cause I know our students are really interested in that one. And so how that's getting, we, in the previous reading, we had, there's some discussions about how that will be done. Maybe with involving the junior achievement uh program down in Auburn, but anyway, that's a big one that I'd like to do next year. Integrated and do whatever we want to get, so. Just a form of comment.
Great, I just wanted to know, uh, the memo here, uh, there, we think we're at the strategic plan, that's indirect, if you open that link up, that gives you directly to the strategic plan. But we're body with all the metrics that are going to be, so you can just open it up and it'll launch into that too. Just going to tie that like that for everybody.
May I add one thing? One thing that's going to really be helpful is like, uh, Director Larson, you mentioned. And I remember back when the Common Core standards were first being created, fifteen years ago or so, the goal was to, instead of going shallow and deep or wide. Have dance, go to people with pure things. And I think it covered that this much, and then it really scaled back very much.
Right.
So now they're doing it again, the primary standards are a big, uh, going to be a big help because I was, wherever I worked, I talked with principals and teachers to say. First work with these. If your students all get proficient or better, these then go to the, the, no, the kids who are ready, you can go to the higher levels. So you need the, like, building house, you gotta have a cement slab first before you start, but it's due to the worst. So kids need to have the foundation before they're ready to perform, so it builds upon that. And we're working on a, the scope and sequence, which basically shows what is taught in and what order, what those, what skills are needed first before you could add to the next step. On which grade level. So that one, we have a math scope, we have a few of the different areas of arts, but we don't um have um math. That's kind of coming along since we're doing a pilot right now for elementary math. And sign up middle school science would be a next big priority for us. Um but that, you know, some districts are really large, have whole department that works on scope and sequence. We have Dr. Dean on me. So. It's uh, you can't go quite as fast. We can borrow a hat for districts who already done it. There were districts we know who are really on top of it. And they will let us try, you know, use theirs for a foundation, so also move a little faster. But it just takes a little time. So that's why we started with. They, before I got here with math was the first cure, the greatest need was. And then uh Yale is next.
And unfortunately, I asked the question, how does it look, guys? So when you kind of do standards, are you a publisher, Mr. Trico, that meets the standards now? Which means every district has to read into the wheel. I mean, hopefully, and you know, like your colleagues know the districts, but still, and it's kind of.
That's it. Yeah, and when I was in Oregon, uh years back, they do a state list for every subject area, like three. And I show you the rubric of how they met the standard. One of the focuses is where is uh racial equity, how does it appear? And so that's how districts then look at the list and pick. Usually you have a committee that reviews the ones that are available. You go to onsite, look at the materials themselves. And you would pick maybe two of the four. And then just put it just those. We don't have that. I say, well, then let's just go to Oregon's website. They're still looking at national publishers, just like we would do. So we just have to, you know, click every click and get some, establish which are the very highest rated materials.
Yeah, unfortunately, you guys, all the time we do that, expressions are, actually, that uh state actually did have it.
Yes.
The other thing that I, that I shared as well, in terms, they said that the assessment teams would be working with the standards team. So hopefully the assessments.
Yeah.
Align with the common power standards and some of the, you know, well, you had a better fair assessment, you know.
Yeah, and that will be um a long process, yeah, because it does take a lot of work to design the assessment. To match the curriculum name. Because you first have to say, which curriculum are they even aligning to assess it to? I didn't have a list, then what are they aligning to? So I don't know what their plan is for that. And then designing a test, because I already is very tightly correlated to the state test right now. Right, like a point eight three, so very high relation is to meet the standard proficiency of already. They're very highly likely to pass either proficiency on the state test. But I'm sure already other companies are going to be scrambling. Yeah. But this happens to create, you know, their product to match because they want to install us the tools.
Thank you also to our guests, to our, so we've been waiting for a lot of the time, they've been, one of those is. Martha Shell, who was joining us on Monday, um and that's the work on making sure that um she has been able to tell our new. Um so the next is the inclusion task force, which there's um, there we shot history and that for about, but I just wanted to kind of. Share with the former, which was something that was initiated, this is not for the bottom, was initiated by the war. Um as a way to look at our response to category, um and gender-based um uh sexual violence prevention. Um and so they've been meeting in presence uh twenty twenty-two, as you just told us on the panel in there. Um and we were asked to provide some recommendations, um so we're all hoping to help you through that report. Um and unfortunately, in the original, to have Monica be able to attend our work sessions, or maybe be able to run down into all this together, just in. Quite just about that way, we gave out a workshop, we had a little bit of a year following it. So. I did want to um give Monica at least just a few moments to um share um uh anything, um if you know my life. Um uh and then um and then we'll add a few additional uh classes that may come up for those.
Hi, everyone. Um. My understanding is that everyone would come with questions for the final report, so I don't have. Um necessarily prepared remarks for it, but if there's any um specific questions you want me to answer or bring back to the task force. Feel free to ask uh now.
So uh going then to the.
No, no, I was just wondering as far as I was looking at the coordinator should be its its own position, not with it. It looks like it was trying to go in with the head of director position, I wasn't quite clear.
Yes, the current talent coordinator is um uh yeah, right, right, right.
Alright, alright. And so the hopes is that we're going to separate that, is that? What's the, I mean, in the report, what is, what's the hopes here that we're trying to get to?
Monica, you want to speak to that or can I listen?
Um I I can speak to it. Um. It would be possible for you to go to that part of the document? It should be on like the second page or maybe third page. Right there, perfect. Oh, you were just there.
No, after that.
Yeah, so I um was trying to convey here, um you know, I'm not trying to say that Gabe is doing a a bad job or anything. But um it does seem like he has two positions squi- squished into one. And that his area of expertise is more aligned with being a an athletic director. Um and so someone coming into that role should already have a lot of knowledge and expertise on title nine, sexual sexual assault prevention, things like that. Um but also there should just be more investment into title nine as an entity. Um. You know, I know other districts that are larger have like whole offices where there's multiple people. I know y'all are a much smaller district. Um. But I think even just having one person where their entire job is title nine would do a lot of good and make a big difference. If that makes sense. And Carly can feel free to fill in any gaps.
Yeah, so to hold her again, the the, so the short form of together based on all the um conversation, those things that's been, the work that has been. And really what what happens next, I think it's up to a little class and um the the superintendent. Um so, you know, technically more of the things that I um now would like to do is kind of pass this. To to the director of Georgia and say, you know, which of these things, you know, I think there are some of them that are pretty actionable right now. Um for instance, regardless of whether we have a dedicated title nine coordinator, I think both proposition, we can certainly have a dedicated title nine. Email address, right? So there's a central location for those things to go. Um there's definitely some immediate response we can do around updating the policy um with some of the language and. And procedures as well. So I think there's some immediate things. And then I think there's some things that we have to think about. How we're going to try and work with getting recipes in place, because in reality, we probably don't. Um aren't sitting in a financial place to hire an entire individual to support this. And that means that I I believe that should be a goal for a few years down the road, maybe even sooner when we have the ability. So um. So these recommendations are recommendations that then um we will openly kind of kick to again. Um the team to decide how we can implement um the recommendations based on 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 what's here. Then in terms of.
It, yeah, it did, I'm.
So one of the things that we talked, just really briefly about, like we've been saying that we have to put it into how it itself, but. Um this idea of um, you know, potential opportunities for um maybe where folks can find professional development. Um for uh sexual prevention, um you know, obviously that they, the the education component for our staff. As well as for our students um is significant and then they show up a lot of this report, they. And then you, or I I believe you might already be sharing that you have some ideas. For the resource is that you might offer us to kind of look into um to find some of those opportunities.
Yeah, I put a little um list, I believe at the end of the little presentation, that slide deck that I sent you all. Um it's not in this final report. Um. But one of those recommendations was O S P I. They do a bunch of different trainings on topics related to sexual assault prevention. I listed a couple that are coming up, I believe. Um another option is the Key County Sexual Assault Resource Center or Case Ark. Um they have a bunch of resources just on their website about um compassionately responding to a rapport. Or um having conversations about boundaries and stuff like that, that could be applicable for school staff or parents or whomever. Um and then my organization, the Heart Review Abuse and Trauma Center um is also a good resource. We do education forums every month, except for during the summer um around topics related to trauma. Cultural competency, sexual assault prevention, um and other related topics. Um. Those are an hour and a half long trainings and they're always online and they're always free. So that's an option. Also, um sometimes we, Carly knows because we've worked with them before, sometimes we do presentations for specific communities as well. Uh based on capacity and need, but um those are some resources that the task force came up with. And I have them listed in that slide deck that I sent you all.
And did you know, um, just to tell you, it's a big, um, is there, are are all of those opportunities free? Um or is there a possibility with them?
Off the top of my head, I'm not positive about O S P I. Um I think so though. All the other ones I listed are free.
So currently, it's so wait, if this is all one position now, is he actively taking these classes? Ones that are obviously free, you know, if it's not going to change quickly, is he actively doing that then as part of this?
Yeah, so this is something that we can, I can find out, because um I'm not sure about the faculty. So everybody in um. We have required trainings on all of these pieces. So there's a mandatory training um related to um social harassment. So everyone's required as a district employee um to do that. And so um there's a standardized training, it's a video, you have to take a test. And then H R is notified and all of that. So there's that that happens annually every year. Um and then in terms of our support for some that's actually doing this work, that is something that we can do to figure out where actually it's needed in terms of additional training and support. I know that there is um some question, like I think this is an interesting endeavor to think about. This is something somebody's. Coordinator job by themselves. Um I I I know that H R does some of this work. I know that he does some of this work. And and there is a difference between staff versus students. And so I mean, I think traditionally in the smaller district. It typically is that this type of coordinator is actually usually yet when they correct their level of that. And so, yeah, it's traditional in a lot of places. And so that's an interesting, it is interesting, it's my experience with that as well. Uh so it we should, we can talk about what actually is needed to support this work and um things. And if that is actually. The correct staff member to do that. I mean, it's something we're talking about anyway. But we're all trained, and I I made a, I found a little certificate, so um yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, we know, and we packed up before, you know. The fundamental, and it's only as good as the whole asset, what happened after, right? And then education and the public support and. You know, particularly online trainings, um you can easily click through something, get a certificate and not really. Not really engage with it very much and not really have sink in in a way that's been a. And I, and I think unfortunately, that's often, we're not saying with them, although unfortunately, the opportunities kind of like. And you were required to trainings that probably not more than that happens. Um yeah, I think a big component of this too is, you know, not just the training that staff are getting, but also how are we really working with students? Um to to educate students on um. On on boundaries, on, as I said, it's on, um we're on the public report, like there's so many different things that. Um, yeah.
I also think one of the things, it's also not just about that, it's also about so references. Right? So when we hire people, are we doing, and I think that's something that H R is really diligent on is. Are we actually really asking great questions and making sure that we are hiring people to that actually. That we're, that we're not actually passing the problem around, you know, just to district and things like that. That's another piece that we have to be able to, so it's about hiring. It's about training and it's about transparency and making sure that people have. Um this, not only the social emotional support, but where do I even go to in the first place? And it's education too.
Were there any other questions?
I think the only, I have just a comment that is, if if the current state is that Gabe's in charge, then there has to be a standard that gives. Actively, especially if they're free, you know, that's here that the response that is on that network, we're working through that until something's changed. Or until a position's created or something on the recommendations, you know, how do we support that person to be the best at what they're doing? Or what they're asked to do, right? And then just, and then, like you said, they created the email or some other things that can, to rather than that can help solve it.
I agree. Great. So I I just one more question, Monica, um what you think about the, the recommendations, are these listed in any particular order? Um that the task force has kind of identified as these are the things that we like, that are act as priority, or are they just going to list it out based on?
Sorry, it's hard to hear. Are you asking if it's in a specific order?
Yeah, are the recommendations offered in any particular order based on, are you really the task force that identify or are they just?
That's a good question. Um no, it's not listed in any particular order. I pretty much just listed it um based on what made the most. Sense um topic wise, but no, I understand that some of these things are way bigger asks than others. And I, I don't think anyone on the task force assumed that any of these things could happen overnight and it may take years to implement these things. Or there may even be things that you disagree with or want to talk more about before going forward with, which is totally understandable. Um if you want to learn more about like why we're recommending certain things, but um no, we're not giving any precedent to any one thing. I think everything is important. Um and yeah, it's not in a specific order.
Can I just share a little bit of information, just to give some folks, uh everyone here, just a little bit additional pieces about what actually is happening? Um um our high school, the most forward, the following topics being taught to students in their health classes. Um disconnected to the what's the proactive work around title nine. So information about critical healthcare and preventative. Prevent, prevent, uh prevention information and services of interpersonal communication skills. That help reduce health risks and support healthy and respectful relationships and behaviors. Healthy relationships and avoidance of exploitive relationships. Uh understanding the influence of the family, peers, communities and the media on healthy sexual relationships and affirmation. Affirmative consent and bystander intervention. So those are the topics covered currently within our health curriculum pieces. From when our health curriculum. At what point do students engage in that curriculum? Um I noticed that there was a requirement for the help that is actually a graduation requirement. Uh so I know what happens in high school, there's also additional courses in the middle school as well, that it is required, every student has to have a health card. Has to have the help, right, to graduate, okay. I was actually intrigued to see, um you know, Monica, I know that the task force kind of decided to focus primarily on secondary. Um for variety reasons, that that makes sense. I I think I was surprised to see that there was such a particularly uh in the staff responses. Uh a lot of elementary folks, um and you know, we we have some discussions about this and, you know, we talk a lot here about. You know, aligned in really particular in the community about the revenge group. Like that, those conversations start in elementary school. Um they look different, of course, but they start in, should they're in elementary school. Um and and I I I guess I see that as a thing like, it's, I guess the fact that so many of the teachers or so many staff. The majority of staff that respond to more of elementary, that tells me that there's probably like some. Desire either or like it's on their minds, um which is what good and also um how are we scaling? Um help um uh related curriculum to elementary. Um so that we can't start talking about boundaries, start talking about the sense, some of those types of things at an age appropriate level in preschool.
I'm wondering if anyone had um additional questions specific to the data, the uh surveys that we administered.
And what were your thoughts on how?
Hmm, I guess what were your thoughts on how did the task force feel about the involvement? Um, and then input from whether a student survey or the staff survey?
You said, um, how did we feel about the level of involvement?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I think we didn't necessarily reach our goals. But I think we got a pretty decent amount and my supervisor was the Title Nine Task Force. Um, Chair for S P S. So I, I went to her a lot for guidance, uh, going through this process. And when I told her we had forty, um, staff members fill out the survey, she thought that was incredible. And I was like, oh wow, really? That was, that was way under our goal, but she thought that was like a really good amount of staff to fill it out. Our goal for, um, students was a hundred, so we didn't even get half to what our goal was. But I think, um, I think we got around forty or thirty nine. I think that's still a decent amount. Um. You'll notice in, um, in the document somewhere around, we're talking about student voice and getting, um, student input. That, um, a lot of the respondents were ninth graders. Which of course we want ninth graders' perspectives, but they definitely skewed the data in a particular way because, um. Of students that know the culture at Foster, they probably have the least amount of insight because they had just started when we administered this. Survey. So a lot of, we had to think about that. A lot of what they were, um, suggesting through the data might have been. What they experienced in middle school. So there's also that thing to, to consider when you're looking at the data. But I'm, I'm actually happy with the amount of, um. Uh, participants we got. And I think for me personally, the thing I'm most excited about were the student listening sessions. I think we got the most helpful information from having a more like free dialogue with students. And asking more open ended questions and, um, having them really talk about what issues they're seeing and, um. You know, recommendations they would give the district. And one of those things, as I think Carly, you were saying, was starting these conversations early. Starting them, you know, in preschool or kindergarten, things like that. But, um. Yeah, I, I'm fairly happy with the amount of data. I had to readjust my expectations. But I think given the size of the, the school and the district, it's, I think, a decent amount. Uh, but I don't know that it's entirely representative of the entire community. That was a long spiel, but are there any other, uh, questions about the data?
I don't think, uh, there are any more questions. Thank you so much, um, for your work over the last year, um, uh, sharing this committee. Um, I know that you didn't go into it, thinking you would be sharing it solo. We're going to go share it for a same fight. For that. So thank you so much for your commitment. Um, uh, it's really, really, really appreciated and, um. But yeah, if other questions come up, I'll definitely just reach out and get it, um, and then we can chat about this.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Feel free to email me, uh, with any questions or guidance or anything about the final report. Um, I'm going to log off now, but thank you so much for inviting me.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, last thing about this, I think, um, it was really interesting and kind of I think telling in some ways. That we have at least two students that from the task force that were no longer in our district. But they were so committed to helping us navigate this, um, that they stayed a part of the task force. I just think that's really powerful. Um, it says what about those students, um, as well as like the potential that we have here to pull up. Um, so I, I just thought that was really exciting. Um, okay. Ooh, as I said, all of that. This has been we, 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 um, okay. We're going to move to, um, the deferred maintenance. Right, um, I'm going to try and make sure that we're being totally with these. Cause I know that they can definitely, we could spend our time talking about this and the next time.
Alright, so, and then you have the first slide. And then go to the next person. Our current situation is we have a perimeter of ninety million dollars. This includes about six million dollars for fulfill one two five seven compliance. Which requires all building in the state of Washington to meet certain energy benchmarks. When we determine what items are prioritized on the list. We first look at safety. We look at regulatory slash legal requirements, operation necessity. And financial payback. If we were in a good financial position, we would be talking about, let's do a project that. Us X and it has a payback of one point two years, we would, uh, you know, actually, you know, jump at those. We're, we're not at that point. Uh, second slide is a list of primary funding sources to summarize what we're looking at. Some are easier to get than others. Some have time limits, uh, every two years or every three years.
So, so let me go back on site and then talk about the H X. So, uh. I'm, I'm, you know, really concerned about, do we know whether we have, you know, high quality air in our buildings? And, you know, the recommendations from, you know, C D T are, you know, related particularly to the, of the various airborne. Diseases, COVID, R I D, COVID, you know, et cetera, um, to be at number thirteen by the end. And I think we got, so you're saying that we're at Merv eleven, but it got another memo earlier. And we're down to Merv eight.
We went to Merv eight for a while. The systems work better with, with Merv eight. They're originally designed closer to the, to that level. We're stressing them using the, the Merv elevens. A decision was made to go to the Merv eights. It was after COVID. And I believe we went back to, uh, Merv elevens two or three months ago.
Is this in all buildings or?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, and all of the, all the systems are designed basically the same, including the brand new Foster?
Uh, confirmation on that is my understanding that they're, uh, they work better with the Merv eights. Uh, Merv, uh, Foster, is that what's that designed for Merv eleven?
No, uh, most of it was designed for Merv, Merv eight builders. Um, that's, you know, in the sign, I'm a little bit of that. And just remember that the sign was done before COVID, or pre-COVID. So it was, um, based on the states about, on construction guidelines at that moment.
So I think I've done some research on this. I mean, there's, the question is kind of. How are we measuring the quality of the air in our buildings? And my understanding after, you know, there was a whole, when like the COVID, it was, you know. Touching and it turned out to be not really, you know, spreading much and there was, um, being close and so forth. And I think it's turned out now that it's mostly the aerosols that's running around in the air is the big issue. And so how do we go through that? And, and so there's, my understanding, the measures are air exchange rates. So that's another, you know, way we could assess this. An understanding that like five air streams per hour is, is what it recommended. Another one is the Merv filter, which is, you know, thirteen. And then the other one, and I think, well, another one is, um. Carbon dioxide rates, because, I mean, if the, if there, there's a lot of carbon dioxide in the room. That means that, you know, I mean, humans breathe out carbon dioxide, so that means we aren't rotating the air fast enough. Because the, so that means, uh, you know, the aerosols are settling in the air and it's been stacked and, and gathered. And then, and then the other one is related to fine particles. There's, um, to, we're talking about smoke and some people, P M two point five is what they call it. So I'm wondering, do we have measures for all of those? I mean, because how do we know if our air is good quality or not good quality if we aren't measuring those? My understanding is we do have CO two.
We do have CO two monitors.
And then the question is, if they get low, my understanding, supposed to be like eight hundred parts per million. Then we should crank on the ventilation system to get more air exchange.
Right, it's a little higher than a hundred, uh, I believe it's twelve hundred, uh, for the, and, and. And then you will find itself, this is the software is, the software, the systems are actually will trigger that. Once the tech, once the sense, when, let's say, when the partic- particulars are higher. Then the system itself will trigger a more change, error change will, will happen in this, in that, in that classroom or in the air later.
Okay, and so are we getting up to five air changes now?
That I don't know. That I don't know if we have in that. Uh, but that, how we know that we have a good air and how we do. Uh, it's number one, is that process that we have on replacing all the equipment that we have in a timely manner. We, we do have, uh, maintaining our equipment in a, in a, in a, in an optimal way. We do partner with machinery to make sure that our inventory and our equipment is working properly. Having a good equipment in the system makes, making it make us sure that our system is working properly. We did also, when we commissioned the, uh, buildings, we did complete, uh, commission reports. Where they engage you, it gives you the rate of air plus how that equipment is, is working. Due to the standards set at that moment. So, um, we do have those reports in place. We do keep our software and our equipment in great, in great shape and repair it. And, and making sure that we go in, uh, prepared on time. The software and the control systems that we have is great to also, it monitors every day. Uh, so you tell us what type of, uh, um, issues we're having in this classroom. It can be the high temperature in the classroom, it could be other issues. So as soon as we have, um, any problems, they're addressed. Fairly fast to make sure that, that systems are complete.
I mean, historians are trained to, to look at and monitor those on a daily basis.
The, the problem, if all those things are designed pre-COVID, then we're, that's a lower quality, much lower quality standard. So the question that always, it's always been in my mind, was it, was it going to take, you know, was the cost to get up to?
A- after this year, we have, we have used eleven dollars to increase, change our sensors. Uh, we had the sensor, sensor type rate cascade eventually last summer. We did the same situation at, that when we actually changed our, our heat pumps in there. So, um, we're looking for, for ways to also maintain all of them in great shape and do not fail in this, in this state.
Yeah, I'd like to see, you know, the reports about, you know, what. And these different measures, I mean, we know some of the Merv is under, like, recommended. So, you know, some of these other reports about the CO two numbers and, uh, I don't think, so we're not looking for fine particles at all. Sound like fifty and two point five stuff, which.
We have mentioned that.
But that, that could be an issue. You know, you know, we're not done with smoke days. I'm sure we'll have some things. And we're also sitting, you know, like, Kathy Doos right under seat that airport. So, you know, I want to know what's, what's the, what's the fine article measure up there so we know if it's healthy or not.
Right, so we do not measure the two point five, and as you said, um, uh, we don't measure that. It's not required in the state. And only the obstruction part is, you know, we follow the building instruction at that time. And no, we don't, we don't measure that. Um, we don't measure for, uh, for, um, smoke. In order, that I know that for sure, the, uh, states and the federal government are providing grants. Uh, to, uh, implement especially for, um, environmental fires and such. So they are just starting to, um, to, to provide that type of grants for humanization.
Yeah, I was creating the, uh, to the governor's budget, uh, because, so one of the programs the state has going against the, uh, captain. That's, you know, regarding for, um, oil companies, so that are, including all this stuff. And so that brought in a lot more money than expected. And he's going to recommend that there be, like, three hundred million dollars set aside in schools. In areas that are highly impacted by environmental, you know, issues like ours. So, um, hopefully we keep in mind, because we should be measuring some of those things. I know we never thought, I think, is doing studies around the airport, you know, for, for that. So, um, yeah, anyway, I hope we can, you know, think of all the ways that we can, you know. Accurately measure, completely measure the health of the air in our systems and, and do as much as we can to improve that. Okay, I have another question on the, I think that's, I think that's, yeah, right.
So, uh, the next slide shows, uh, slightly, primary funding sources. I think I gave an update on this. We will vote to win. Fourth page and again. We prioritize which items we work on for first. Is safety. Second is legal and regulatory issues. Third, it's an operational necessity. For example, at Foster, uh, we have a sewer line that's going under the comments. It'll be ripped up over winter break. It's a sewage spot, operational necessity because. The water has to go someplace. Fourth, we do financial payback. And then there's everything else after, after that.
Question on, um, the gas station prices. So, I tend to the grass system, we're talking about fire suppression. Which is a bunch of pipes that are kept under pressure until some heat or something, fire triggers them. And then water is released and.
That's right.
The problem is, if the pipe, and then pressure is released. And we have two situations like that. I remember, and we're coming out for, I think, a year ago or two years ago. That happened at the, at the.
Well, it happened back in, uh, last, last December.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, Christmas Day.
Yeah, right.
Yes, so, so, some of them were washing, but virtually, um. Four minutes, thirty, so, oh, we have, uh, thirty five degrees.
And we count on.
Right, so it's something that we need to move into the business, becoming an urgent, um, urgent care.
I guess my question is.
Can we, can we, uh, jump to the next slide, uh, for, for the rest of the, the board members? The, the first slide is a, is a photo of, of what we're talking about. To Dave's point, the system is a series of pipes. The pipes were installed in the nineties at the current standards, which are prone to rust. And then you get the divots and then you get the, the, the water settling. The closer the pipe is to an exterior wall, it's just like your home. More likely it's going to break as the temperature gets down into the upper twenties, mid twenties, lower twenties. And though those are generally what causes the pills, but sometimes the pill happens when it's warmer. Uh, we'll put it.
Yeah, that's my question. So this is, why wasn't this replaced last summer? I mean, we have six million dollars in our capital projects, some just got one million. Why didn't we do it last summer? Take care, because we know the likelihood of this thing causing a problem like now.
And then that one million dollar project turns into a, you know, one million in a quarter because you spent so much money on repairs.
And then it, it also impacted our insurance. How do, how do we pay the recovery from, you know, like last, um. Last December, whatever it was, and what place got flooded, is that paper out of insurance money?
Yeah, it was actually, it was reported, but it's much more.
Yeah, so then a premium to this.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we need to get this.
Yeah, I, I, I wasn't here a year ago.
Yeah.
So, so correct me if this is a false statement. When, when I was here before, Liliana handled a ninety-nine million dollar. Instruction project, she, 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 she was the first, in addition to running the facilities program and. During deferred maintenance projects. It's my understanding that, it, it's my belief that if Lily had had the money three years ago. All of the items on, for all purposes, the items on the deferred list would have been completed. If she had the money two years ago, the same, uh, this is the same thing. Today, if Liliana had the money, she could schedule these projects to get them completed. Over the summer, the ones that go longer than a summer, obviously more, she could get them done in a timely manner. To whatever standards that, that, that we wanted and the board wanted. It's, so this is my, my, my statement. Did you have enough money? Last year or two years ago to, to the, to the trisystem replacement?
Um, the studies for the, um, trisystem was completed in this year in June of two thousand and eight. So, um, after the big break, we had, Merry Christmas time, then we had, uh, the status that by, by B C E, it's the, um. B C E engineering, uh, so they ana- analyzed whole systems, so the study then, then. It ended up, um, and it was completed by that, obviously. So that I asked you the question when we, uh, the, um, when we had, uh. When we had the studies done, that's when we provided that information to the, um. The superintendent at the time and to, uh, the finance chief, the finance chief at that one.
So it just sounds like we need to do a lot of, of getting on these things. Literally. Um, so we kind of waited until this point, yeah, and so hopefully we can get this done next summer.
The, the, uh, the item that is most likely to be bounced from the list, if we go back to the previous slide. It's the dry system. Uh, late, later in the agenda, the board will be asked to approve a four million dollar inter fund loan. In all likelihood, the district will come back and ask for more money to get through the year. That will wipe out the, the remaining capital funds that we have, and put the items that are listed on this page at risk. The matter of funding.
Well, okay, we can have that discussion about that. I'll save that for then.
It's through, we've been about seventeen minutes and four slides already, so.
Yeah. All right, I think we completed, uh, this slide, and now we saw this slide. With the photos, the other one is on the big boys. The final slide. Is a listing of the six million dollars that we will need to spend to make, uh, HP one two five seven compliant. Uh, round five million of this is for the HVAC systems. If a decision is made to upgrade our systems, the, the cost will, will be more than what's shown. And in all likelihood, when we do the projects, inflation will happen, and, and the cost will be higher.
Yep. Okay, there's a difference.
So, I, I always hope that, you know, I'm, I'm always concerned, you know, and getting more loans and, and et cetera, it's, it's, um. It's a challenge, right, that, that we're here, and we're all facing it together, um. I need for me personally, director, I need it to, to be brought down a little bit. Uh, different, outlined in a different voice, I can better understand, you know, the situation. I'd like to see how, um. If, just momentarily, if we take our student population now, the funds that are coming in, right, that we have currently. Um, without this happening that's in the background, are we able to, are we go to sustain kind of our operations, what we have now? Was so with our student populations and everything that we have, are we able to sustain currently? Would that be a surplus, or will we still need a deficit? And then on, on that information, then I'd like to see, then, of course, I know that we have different grants and other things that are coming in there. And how does that funnel into it?
Are you talking about, uh?
As far as district law, because we're facing.
Yeah, uh, uh, operating money or.
Correct.
My operating.
Yes, yeah.
So, uh. The infrastructure that we had three years ago, and that's, that's what I'm familiar with. A, a student count of around twenty-seven hundred.
Okay.
We're down to a student count of around twenty-five sixty, so we're, we're down students. If, if we took the infrastructure we had three years ago. And put it on our student body now, we would have deficits. And, and, and of course, the, uh, uh, the infrastructure is, is expanding. Uh. We've gone through eighteen million dollars worth of COVID relief money, and in addition. All the savings that have been accumulated in seventy-five year history of the district. So the infrastructure that we need today is skinned down from what was three years ago. And then we need to skim it down a little bit more for a while to pay back our interest fund loans.
And then we're asking for more. That, that, that's on here, I could just. It's, um, I just need to, uh, for me, you know, being, because it's on here, and I just need to see how this is gonna break down. Better, and that there's a light at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah.
You know, that, or, because if we're just borrowing, it makes me think of the old money tree, you know what I mean? Or you just take your paycheck and you're going, and then you're never gonna get out of it, right? So I, I just wanna see what's the plan. I get the process of trying to keep us. Going, but what's the plan to see the lights? That we're gonna come out of the other end of this and have a surplus, and, and at what cost is that along the way? You know, I'm not, I haven't heard of, of what's that gonna cost us as a district either, trying to meet this budget? And then trying to pay these, pay these through on, on, I just need to see what that looks like, a little more.
Can I make?
Valuable for me, yeah.
Yeah, can I make a, a, a recommendation?
Absolutely.
Uh, we, 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 uh, we've had the conversations with the full board. Open to another, uh, board budget meeting. I'm also open, working with one or two board members at a time, so that, you know, we avoid forum rules. I'll give you as much time as you want, and I can go in as much detail as you want. And, and, and that would actually be good for both of us, as we assess your priorities and. And, and you all, and, you know, get a better understanding of the barriers that, that we face.
I think the, the short answer to that question is because we spend, what, eighty-five percent of the budget, so the difference on people. Staff salary, that's, the only way to get out of that is to have less people.
So, um, and I guess, and then so, and I appreciate that, uh, so what I have to then. Ask the obvious question is then what's the plan looking forward to, to, um. Seeing us through that to get us to the other end, so, because we need to get back to a certain, we need to be in an operating cost that. It functions and that, that the districts, you know.
So, uh, the, uh, with this, with school districts, uh, di- different than private industry. Private industry, somebody is hired and. You can, you know, the termination can happen at any time. School districts, it's an annual contract.
Right.
In the spring. The district will present a list of reductions in force.
Fascinating, I think, yeah.
So I'm assuming that we're going to have to have that conversation at some point, and looking at what, what's going to happen, especially after.
Yeah.
Uh, we're getting audited, right, here, that we're gonna have some, come in and take a look at the district, and then at that point, we need to make some.
Yes.
Decisions as a district of, of how to go forward.
Yes.
In thinking that, though, uh, we have to still, obviously, you have big problems that we need to deal with now, right?
And, and, and you hit it on the head, uh. Eighty-five to ninety-five percent of the cost structure that we have today is, we're, we're stuck with.
Yeah.
We're, we're stuck with the, the, uh, people infrastructure and. Almost all of the contracts were signed in the summer. For a year basis. So we're, we're, we're contractually stuck with.
Yeah.
For the most part, all of them, some, some there's some wiggle room, and. So how, how do we get, what, what can we do from today going forward to get through this school year to have a chance? At having. Of, uh. An infrastructure that fits our student base.
So actually, if it's okay, I'm gonna, gonna pause this for, for a few reasons. One is, we're getting a little bit off topic. Of specifically deferred maintenance, um, it will be really careful, you know, every time. And, um, we, so we have been doing some more, what's second, we're really diving into budget. Um, we have the next one set over for February, but we're, we were just having a sidebar. I think it would be wise to move that to January, um, for the, and really to make sure that. Um, everybody, you know, with new board members, have a good understanding, can get some of these questions answered, um, so that we can clearly think about that. Step halfway forward, um. Is that okay? I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know. Question, we're just learning, we're just saying.
Absolutely. I, I just heard that we're gonna need to ask for more money in a loan, so I'm just getting these done, and my question is. If, if we're asking for more money, where's the money to pay it back coming?
Right, yeah.
That's, that's where I, that's where my point was going.
I think we can pose that question again when we get down to this.
Okay, great.
Um, and then see, speak to that better, but we. So one of the things I've done is I've actually just sent a trading agreement email, uh, we, a chief order. Uh, email so that he could send to the newest board members the letters that I sent to staff and community. Because that'll be helpful, because there's a lot of information around what the situation is, what we're planning, what the plan, and then also a copy of the past PowerPoint. For the work sessions that actually addressed in one, in all the pieces. That would be a lot, it's a lot, and then we have planned, we have planned a February work session. To update, uh, everyone on, on where we're, what we're working on in terms of next steps. One of the things we have done is since when we identified, um, the, the, and funding your balance. And all of the, um, concerns, we actually publish, uh, weekly with the staff. We, so we've identified control measures that we're currently working on to streamline, making sure. That, uh, everyone is really clear, uh, what we are gonna fund and not fund, so we've already started that process for this year already. Uh, and we have published that, uh, weekly with staff, uh, so for an example, I'll just give somebody that's a really simple example. It's not as big as some of the other things, but like, for example, the purchase of food, for example. Uh, in the past, you know, you know, we have stayed with the family, families and things, we've identified that the only, um. Way we're gonna start purchasing food continually moving forward is if it's allowable through rent. Um, and but other than that, no more purchase of food for other, uh, funding resources as an example. Uh, also, another measure we've done is making sure that all extra time or all after time is pre-approved. Prior to happening to ensure, so there's little things that we've done to streamline a cost, so that gets published, we can actually study that list as well. And as we continue to look forward, we're gonna have to identify more things as well. Um, and in addition, have recommendations in terms of staffing costs, and we, uh, one of the things that has happened in the fall, when we first identified. Some of the concerns and on the budget, um, we already went out to staff meetings, had lots of questions about enrollment, we went to all our schools. And then we just started that process again, because we just gave another update, and then, uh, Chief Order and I just attended our first staff meeting. Uh, it was last week, where we went to Caskey View, and we are scheduled to go back into school in January. And February to answer our questions, staff questions, um, about some of the costs, so we are working very hard on communicating. Making decisions, making control decisions, so that we can actually start working on cost cutting measures now. But as you're right, the, the amount's pretty large, so we have to go start really talking about. Continued tests for this year, continued controls for this year, and then larger decisions. For twenty-four, twenty-five moving forward, because our goal is, you're right, we cannot be in this situation, and we need to have a positive. And fund your balance, and actually according to policy, we need to. That is the policy, it's perfect, we're not there, uh, we have to go about that, and the goal is to get there over time. So, but there's a lot of information, and I do think, um, once we send that information, they may rate. The scheduled time with you and with you, so that we can go through, and so that we can, uh, what's, this has happened since the summer. And we're looking towards the fall, but it's been, it's been, it's been a little bit. You know, covering and covering, and then we're like, okay, here it is, yeah, it's reality, and we have work to do. But yeah, it's, we have to make some good decisions soon. And a lot of, add one more thing, so that, like, you know, we've also heard in age of our union workers, and so we're meeting with them, and actually. Um, and I've forgotten if our HR secretary director is already starting to work in plan. Uh, they have to space bargaining, because the board has identified budget priorities, so that's something that probably could be used for it as well, I mean. And we are actually taking those board priorities and meeting with our union workers. To really ensure that we're all really good about our fair priorities from their perspective, we're gonna, so we're having all of these conversations. But yes, we have to also make more decisions, because it's a long term versus a short term. Of work that we have to do on this, so. This year we have, I'll go with that, every woman I have this year, so, and we're all meaningful.
It's, yeah, it is one, it's December now, we've got January, February, March, April, that's about one month, that's back in May, and that's, that's quick. You know, that's here, and so I just, yeah, I would love to hear what the pathboard is, if we have a path.
Any, any other questions?
Thank you so much. Right, um, that brings us now to our arrow presentation. Thank you so much, um, folks for, so patient, we upped you all of that. Um, yeah, we do, uh, you know, we're sure, you know, we're, however, um, just. You know how to strike, we will have.
Oh, of course. Oh, yeah, what you just said, talking about is really important, so, clearly, so no problem at all.
No, this is very.
Yes, it's, it could be a little more, maybe a good one for Georgia, uh. Gets it, of course, even, uh, okay, so, uh, again, thank you so much, folks for, for being here tonight, so. Um, for the board, uh, some of the, uh, I mentioned, probably all kinds of history, but, um. Uh, this group has been working with us for our, for the last few years, um. Specifically looking at SROs, but, but, because we've never had an SRO, which we kind of speak to the question you guys earlier, uh, obviously there's more. And, um, it, it's a conversation that we have recently, um. So what we're hoping to do more is to ship you a little bit, so, um, with that, I just constitute the, the.
Great. Thank, thank you, I will, um, I'm the disembodied voice of, uh. The group here at the moment, but thank you for the opportunity to present to you today on the School Community Collaborative Project. But thank you for the opportunity to present to you today on the School Community Collaborative Project. Uh my name's Susan Seabrooks and I'm the research coordinator on this work. Um the first ten minutes of our presentation will focus on work done with the School Resource Officer Project. And it'll be presented by Dr. Keith Hollinar, who is a postdoctoral fellow at the University of Washington. Um the second ten minutes will address current directions of this work. And be presented by Dr. Sharon Lang, who is faculty at University of Washington Tacoma. And then we've left a final ten minutes to address Q and A and Dr. Lang will also be moderating that section. Um if you do hear me call out at any point, um just to call time, we want to be very respectable of your time today. I know it's been um a long meeting, um and we want to make sure we use our time wisely. So I may call out if we do tend to run up against our time limits. Um also, just as a last comment, in present in person with you today is also Dr. Sahara Kamel from UW Tacoma. And attending virtually is our principal investigator, Dr. Monica Vavallala, also from University of Washington. So with that, I will turn over the presentation to Keith Hollinar.
And Marcus is with us too. He was, he was the facilitator and like a key person. He is here, he is here and in in present, so. So, hey, everybody, how's it going? My name is Keith Hollinar. Um I'm at the University of Washington. My primary specialty is studying the causes and consequences of youth violence with the primary of this like school violence prevention. Then with school resource officer programs and also school lockdown, I heard a lot. And I just want to start off by thanking um the Tuck Willa School Community, parents, staff. Um administrators, police officers, community member, but also students. Uh you guys are very precocious and very insightful about some pretty hot button issues. And I've always appreciated, you know, what you offer here. So, thank you uh very much. So we began this work um in collaboration with King County. Where we examined discipline out disciplinary outcomes associated with SRO programs. We also examined uh alternatives to SRO programs nationwide. And specifically, Tuck Willa School District's knowledge, attitudes, and beliefs regarding their SRO programs. Tuck Willa and board us during this work um that understanding their community's perspectives about SROs was a leading priority. And then in collaboration with the district, uh we analyzed survey data, conducted listening sessions, held interviews. Designed a community action group, which we called the School Community Collaborative. That eventually led to a revised SRO or School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding. So in the beginning, when this sort of all, and you can go to the uh, oh, perfect, awesome. In the beginning, um we examined community surveys uh to seven hundred and forty-three students, parents, community members, and staff. We administered eight listening sessions and group interviews that ranged around three to like fifteen people per. Um and then conducted three individual interviews with the district administrators. In our discussion sessions and group interviews, we sought inputs from showalter and foster high uh students. Parents, teachers, principals, staff, police officers, and local community members. Translators were used for communications with communities that prefer languages other than English. Including Spanish, Burmese, Vietnamese, Arabic, and Nepali. Cyber and senses were provided by uh to those who participated in these sessions and also the interviews. One question from the online survey, which is kind of like the the major one, was, do you feel we should continue with the SRO program? Most participants wanted to continue with the SRO program with ninety-three percent of students. Seventy-eight percent of parents and eighty-three percent of community members wanting to continue the program. Approximately seventy-one percent of staff endorsed continuing the program, which was the lowest level of endorsement among all groups. Among those who wanted to continue the program, they most often wanted to keep it how it is. However, a portion of participants that those who expressed wanting to continue their program wanted changes. For example, among students who wanted to continue the SRO program, forty percent also wanted some sort of change to the program. The desire to change the SRO program uh was lowest among community members. As twenty-two percent of community members who wanted changes, well, only twenty-two percent wanted changes that the SRO program was to continue. The next slide, thank you. Um the listening sessions that we had. You know, delve a lot deeper into what people sort of were, wanted to have a dialogue about the School Resource Officer Program. So we got to sort of uncover a rich source of information about how well participants understood the SRO program. What they felt about the SRO program, what they believe the SRO program should be doing. And we particularly found the most rich information uh in community members' expressed preferences toward SROs. And potential alternative approaches to school safety. The preferences primarily focused on reforming the SRO program, what can be done differently. Whereas the alternatives focused on different strategies that either supplemented and worked along with the SRO program. Or completely replaced the roles and responsibilities of the SROs overall. You're on it. You see that face? I don't have to do it. Cool. Um as a result of both the online surveys and the listening sessions. It became pretty clear that the Tuck Willa School District community desired greater engagement and involvement in the school safety processes. Particularly regarding the SRO program. Thus, we worked with the district to develop a community action group. Or what we call the School Community Collaborative and did just that. At the outset, the primary goal of the School Community Collaborative was to develop culturally competent solutions to school safety and policing. That provide safe, safe and equitable learning environments for students of all races and ethnicities in Tuck Willa. The blueprint on this model that we really pulled from um. To implement the School Community Collaborative was developed by Aidan Ball, a University of Wisconsin professor of education. The blueprint, the blueprint developed by Ball focuses on using community engaged collaborations in schools. To redesign school disciplinary systems through a culturally responsive, reform-focused approach. That involves a diverse group of community members, including students, parents, staff, administrators. And community members from all different walks of life. In Ball's approach, the ultimate aim is to promote social equity and discipline and safety. By having the community own the process of developing school safety policy. The fundamental core of this approach for forming an SRO program, in the case of Tuck Willa, uh can be summarized really in five stages. One, we gotta form the collaborative. And that collaborative should represent the diversity and richness of the school community. The collaborative typically includes, again, students, staff, parents, police, and community members. From a diverse range of racial, ethnic, social, and cultural backgrounds. Once this collaborative is formed, this collaborative then uses data. Such as the all the stuff we did in terms of listening sessions and the surveys earlier on. Um and their own lived experiences to inform essentially what is the here and now related to the problem at hand. They wanted to reform the SRO. With this information, the collaborative defines a well-articulated goal or what the collaborative is going to deliver to the district. And that acts as a north star for the whole process. After defining the goal, the collaborative critically examines programs and practices that contribute to problems and inform solutions. With the ultimate aim, again, of reaching the goal that was defined by the collaborative. Once existing programs or practices are well understood, so for example, the SRO program and the SRO program memorandum of understanding. Um then the collaborative begins to co-develop performative solutions that are actionable to policy. In the vital stages of the process, these actual recommendations are then translated and implemented into policy. Through an implementation plan that is co-developed with the district. And overall, this process, you know, can be pretty simply, you know, captured is that you're trying to get community members together. To use data, personal experiences, and their own engagement. To define a reformer goal to change existing school policies related to policing and safety. Um and what this process allows is when the community plays ownership over the school safety practice uh strategy. And which is expected to increase community perceptions about the credibility of the school safety strategy. Because they have in hand in making it. So the next slide. So this is sort of what we did in Tuck Willa. We had five sessions. And, you know, basically, it follows that model that I just described. Um. The timeline was adapted, in this case, by Tuck Willa School Districts. For example, session two, once we got everyone introduced and the the collaborator selected the session two. We use data, everything was like the listing session surveys to define the goals. Session three, review current Tuck Willa SRO program practices and the memorandum of understanding agreements that were used in the past. Session four, continue the critique of the SRO memorandum of understanding. And session five, develop reforming solutions to the memorandum of understanding and develop implementation plan. In terms of who participated in the School Community Collaborative. We had sixteen participants in total, seven students, five staff, three law enforcement, and one parent. Uh we administered an online survey, survey to the participants to gather more information about their identity. We were only able to obtain ten responses out of the out of the sixteen. But among those who completed the survey, the gender distribution was roughly equal. And most participants either identified as Black or African American or Hispanic. And so after reviewing the data, the listening sessions, sharing their own personal experiences regarding SROs and otherwise. The collaborative decided to focus on three primary goals in reforming and having a new memorandum of understanding. Building relationship and trust, promoting racial and ethnic equity, and increasing school safety. All our discussions focused on these goals. And then eventually, these goals were then the reformer's solutions reflected in the revised MOU. Including the admission statement, the SRO rules, and the SRO responsibilities. This revised MOU was submitted to the board by Dr. Flip Hardin after revisions as part of the implementation strategy. Um and I just want to say that uh someone who's not here today, Dr. Chelsea Hicks, um. We owe a lot to her as well because she also participated facilitating uh the groups along with Marcus Doublefield and myself. And it was a fantastic process. It was, it changed my own life, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Hollinar. So I'm going to present the new directions um that we are proposing. Uh we're proposing one of those approaches. And this is a result of conversations that we've had with the Tuck Willa School District. Um we learned that safety is more than just a single entity and rather than just the ethical. That safety should be much more contextual, should consider a number of different factors. Certainly, in my listening, you guys said I recognize safety so much broader than a single measure. We want to ensure that we collect um data on populations in a more dispersed way, broadly. So that we are at least um um accounting for as many different um individuals within our community as possible. That accountability must include intersectionality as well. We recognize that when we're talking about students, we're not just talking about race and gender, disability, um. Gender um diversity, we're talking about these things that connect and intersect. And so we must be able to be thoughtful about how are we capturing the population that we serve in the best way possible. Um in terms of a holistic model. Um so for the next slide, um and this is two slide uh um further up. Uh feedback from the community, um we did hear you quite loud and clear. We 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 uh actually. It's not right there. Well, I'll just, I'll just talk to them. I don't want to hold this up. That's not a problem. Um.
We can.
So the feedback that we heard from from the Tuck Willa School District is that is the fact that safety is your overarching need. Um that the approach that we take must be broad and it must be multi-dimensional. That is, is addressing a number of elements that I spoke about today that's going on in your community. We must focus on the principles of community engaged research, which I will speak to you about shortly. And that means that in terms of being, in terms of being representative. Um I spoke about the fact that we need numbers, that a number of students that are going to inform, say, a policy or doctrine. That we need to have that representation so that it is actually um robust in terms of our outcome. We need, um part of our principles of community engagement involves uh evaluation measures. As Dr. Kamel is here, we must think about how do we assess the viability of the model that we present? We have to, we are part of assessment ensures that we have a model that is sustainable after we initiate this work. Because we do want to make sure that um that there is at least sustainability of that work. And so we're really conceptualizing how we can evolve the model that that Dr. Hollinar um came up with. To be much more um responsive to your specific needs in a very broad sense. Um we certainly are also thinking about, um we heard feedback on the around policy changes. What are some policies that you'd like to address and how can we assess that? So these are the feedback, that these are some of the levels of feedback that we did receive from you that we are trying to be responsive to. Now, clarity from your district is needed on a number of different items, which is the next page, which talks about the target. So person's safety and well-being, safety can come in many, many forms. It's a physical safety, emotional, it's social. What what is safety defined by? Who might be your target population? We have our traditional populations, which are our students, certainly our teachers, our staff. But there are other groups as well, human resources. We heard about human resources who are involved in safety training. We heard about a community engaged lead who is also involved in safety and security. We heard about director of operations, who's also should be a voice that is critical in this kind of discussion. And then, of course, the source of the issue we need to hear about from you, what are the issues? And really, what are issues that we can modify uh working in conjunction with you? So again, we need some clarity on these items, on these items, so that we can work on with you. Now, what you see there is kind of a bit dense, this this image. But it's an interesting model which speaks about how we engage um in terms of community engaged research. The core principle of community engaged research is that the community is the center of this um of this work. And that the attributes must be, um whatever attributes that we have, must be meaningful to community engagements. In this century, you see those first principles, that the work that we do must be co-equal, that it benefits, not us, but it benefits you. So it's mutually beneficial, that we triple create the work from the inception. So we're, you help us in identifying your priorities, we help you in identifying how we study that. How do we design our study to best meet that? That this relationship should be ongoing, that we don't just keep in and do the work and go back out. We do want to be able to continue working with you. If it involves intense work at the very beginning, but later on monitoring in fact, that you can continue engaging with us. So that we can guide this work, this is what we want to do. Um shared governance and multi-knowledge. When we say multi-knowledge, we're learning from you as well as you're learning from us. The fact we want to learn, we only want to be in a background. And of course, if bi-directional, the learning has to be bi-directional. These are the core issues of community engagement research. And we want to start that with you. Now, as we um move out from that core community, community engagement. We also have these items that are found out in terms of what are the measurable outcomes that you will, that we will help you to define. So your measurable outcome could be strengthened partnerships with other communities within the school district. In terms of work that you want to do around safety, that could be your specific outcome. It could be expanded knowledge around school safety. It could be expanded knowledge about how to help. Um our students address mental health and social well-being and a number of different factors. Could be development of new curriculum, uh Dr. Vavillana spoke about, the work that she's done in return to learn. Where they develop new tools that supports the school in helping students get back into the school system after they suffered a concussion. This could be the work that we provide for you. It could be improved healthcare and health outcomes. And of course, um that's why we community, of course, that's a little bit more um. More as a tariff, but certainly that's what we want and that is our ultimately, the ultimate goal. And so this is, this this diagram that I see in front of you is designed to identify how we work. As a community and partner in partnership and then what are the measurable outcomes and assuring that you meet the goals that you have. And so the last, the the slide after that, um which is really a key slide, we're back on. So this slide is really key. The importance of the slide is to help you identify your priorities, right? And so you see um four quadrants there. The top quadrant is. Uh um and in this case, what you guys do is that you present a number of priorities that you'd like to work on. And then you vet them, you vet priorities for those that you like to retain and those you'd like to not retain. Then you go to a next session where you vote on these priorities to figure out, um are they implementable? Are they impactful? And then you end up with these quadrants. On the top left-hand corner, where you have priority, these are the priorities that you've identified whereby it does have substantial impact. Whatever priority that you decided, it is highly beneficial to your community, plus the good thing about it is that it. Plus, the good thing about it is that in terms of difficulty of implementation, it is on the low end of implementation, the high impact. What this means is that this is a priority that, that you can get done with limited resources because you don't have to put too much into that. That's our high, uh, high priority. Then you have the investment, in the investment, again, the benefit is high, but the amount of, um, work to implement is quite high as well. And so in this case, when you think about those types of priorities, you think hmm, these are things that it is a desired item. But it's perhaps too expensive to do right now, so I can put it back on the back burner until we have the money, the budget and the work out. And it's possible to do that, and so this is how we'll work with you to identify your priorities. By thinking about what's implementable and then what is more impactful. And as you identify those things, and we work with you to do that, then you can tease out the, the work that you'd like to do moving forward. So for the next slide, um, um, in any community engaged endeavor. We develop priorities, we have great ideas, we identify our communities that can benefit from that, we certainly identify the issue. But we have to ensure that the work that we do is feasible, it has to be feasible. Feasibility means that if the, the, the stress that we help you put in place, is it acceptable? How will the target audience, students, the staff, whomever, react to that item? We have to think about that ahead of time, if they will not react well to it, we've lost a lot of time and a lot of resources, then we don't wanna do that. And that is the acceptability. The demand is also part of the assessment of feasibility. This is an estimated, uh, estimation of whether or not the item that you put in place will be used by the community. If you don't use it, it is not feasible, and so we have to assess that at the very beginning as well. Implementation is another assessment that we must do at the very beginning. The extent to which that priority will be implemented, we can create something, but it goes nowhere, it just. And in, in, in research, we say that these things go in these uh, file drawer, that they just stay there, they don't go anywhere, and we have to assure that. And so there are all of those things without me having to go in, 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 in nauseam. Um, practicality, um, can the priority be implemented with as, you know, as, as few constraints as possible? Adaptation, can you modify that priority for a different environment, different people, different situations? That's adaptability, integration, if, does the system need to change to integrate the work that we have proposed? That is, can the infrastructure support that priority that was identified? Expansion, again, the priority that's identified, is it adaptable to new audiences? Can it expand to different groups of people in order to be usable, because we all things change? And finally, limited efficiency, again, can that priority occur in a limited way? So this here just for that, and, and it seems technical, and certainly, we, 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 we have a brand with Dr. Helen R., Dr. Mail. To really assess feasibility, that's something we must do because we certainly don't want to present something that just stops after. We present the, um, the level of the score. So on the next page, um, we can get this thing in order here. Uh, we do want to continue to build on the work that we started with you with the school collaborator. And so we want to leverage strength that exists with the S E C model and address limitations. So, you know, it was a very robust, um, uh, model, I have to tell you that, that Dr. Helen R. did a fantastic job. Um, with Dr. Hicks, they really did. Um, in terms of the pre-survey that was developed, that, that they used to identify what needed to be done. I mean, there was what, four hundred seventy-five students, um, which.
Well, that was, yeah, that was, that was, uh, that was, that was, that was the school district, just to be clear, so we can't claim so much, that is so much bad on the back.
But that was the foundation, and, and so that was key. Of course, the, the S E C model was used in that, as Dr. Helen R. mentioned, um, that's a model that is an evidence-based model, I believe. Um, the process was quite rigorous because there were listening sessions, there were um, um, tapping into the, the instruments. Um, key informant attributes that were done as well, from my understanding. The process was rapid, it was really quite intriguing how, um, we were able to, um, compile this progress within a five, this work in five, five months, five weeks. You know, five weeks, and this is a process that normally goes on for an extended period of time. And of course, was facilitated, uh, by David and, and, and we're solving problems. But we don't wanna address, um, kind of limitations, um, lack of post, um, um, S E C assessment. Um, transitions that occur in terms of leadership, representation, we need that as well. And of course, the whole listing model, we don't want to, we just focus on SRO, which we know that that is a key issue. But we certainly, it's, it's an issue, but we certainly wanna be a broad, um, um, a model that speaks to help in a very larger contextual way. And not just in a singular way. Um, so, um, again, um, we are in our conversations, um, we're both with you and on our own, thinking about how we can. Um, con- um, consider a holistic model, but this is based on you and your discussions and helping us guide you in this. Um, so the last slide, um, is just really just talking about what the community engaged with, um, we're always working like that you are. And the community is the advisor that they, that there's a collaborative relationship. But essentially, we don't lead, we follow your lead, um, in moving this forward. And so we also continue to have conversations with you and helping you invest out the various priorities. But we will do this in a very systematic, very controlled, a very intentional way to assure that you're able to meet your safety. As you've identified with us today.
You know, when I think about, you know, the, the same way that you made it earlier, you should sit out, you know, to feel that could be. You know, the whole standards around, that's, it's, it's talking about the safety of the whole, or then, you know, this, that, each other, this, wow. The way that you suffer, the, 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 you do these things, and I feel, I see this as a big opportunity to really help us. Get there and identify the steps that you have and the priorities around it, um, what that looks like.
We're open to any questions at all.
Yeah, I think that you're one of your points, but, um, the broader, maybe put it in a broader context because. You know, typically, people think about SROs as, you know, trying to, um, prevent, you know, shooters or things like that, but. But, you know, and talking to students, it's, you know, the, the whole issue of having, um. You know, to, to shooting or whatever is, is huge, and it goes away after that. That's our other way, part of it down on the, on the list in terms of, you know, there's been a whole chain of events that led up to that. So I think you're right, it's really important to, and when we talk about this, I mean, a lot of times. It's been, you know, focused just on what the police department would do, but I think absolutely we need to put it in. When we, any, any decisions that we make, we need to put it in that broader context. There were all the other things, you know, like social workers, mental health and all that kind of stuff, and this is just a piece of that whole thing.
Yeah, I think it was, it was you, Dr. Loney, that was just, uh, mentioned, the, the pool, right? It's a pool that might could be utilized to help us initially, I think that really resonates with you. Um, in terms of doing like the thing, I think it's, it makes sense why there has been such a. I mean, who awareness around the special of the service, um, and, um. So it makes sense why, again, why that was kind of the focus of, on the original project. Um, and, and now we have, again, a, a tool that can do everything differently about it. Um, and that doesn't mean I can't really use two, that's what I mean. Um, that the MOU for the SROs can't come back to the board for a few more, um, while this work is continuing to happen. Um, those are, now we're kind of separating, those just over the way. Um, as, as, as we decided the other day, that MOU piece specifically is coming off of his team's work. And, and, and it's now spicy with them once a weekend, you know, we can talk about when and how, and we can do that. Um, yeah, I'm gonna make that for, um, in a moment.
Okay, so I have a question about, like, like going back up to the survey, you feel like we should continue with the F L program? And I think especially in the staff, there's a third, that's simply no, not at all. And I come, and I get the other section, so to be honest, and, and, and agree that the F L program could end. Do you think that people like, want, want, I guess, sorry?
Um, so through the listening sessions, uh, it, it really boils down to. Uh, from what people said, in the way that we heard and documented, is racial equity and treatment of officers and past historical trauma associated with officers. Um, and that was a resounding primary reason, um, overall. And I, you know, someone in the audience here, um, was participant in almost every step of the way, uh, Marcus. You gotta chime in on here, yeah, what, like, what do you, what, what did you hear? What was your experience? Like, cause this was, that, that was mine, that's what I heard, but, you know, maybe I captured the most.
Police, I think it was big, um, police can protect, protect, and police others. And then that, that there was a big, you know, comparing, it's the school, everyone, the school would be a safe environment, you can learn from that safe. And so that, that, that pressure of a uniform doesn't always mean taking too much, right? So they spoke about those, these are the most challenges that came up throughout, especially for me as a color. It was having always showed to be better.
Yeah, so for example, there was a response, um, it was a, a mom, and she talked about her son. Going to school and seeing an officer with like a gun, and that being like traumatic. Because him interacting with that every single day and then seeing, uh, black people getting killed in the media. It's like, I'm sorry to be like, if it's graphic, but this is what they said, um, that was like amazing, right? So just capturing sort of, that was the primary reason that we heard at least in the listening session.
Like, kind of social and equity is a conclusion?
Yeah, I think I would, I would, I would, that's the best, again, tell you, man, precocious, precocious and cynical, that's like. Difficult experience when interacting with students here, yeah.
The one thing I'd like to add to that, and thank you for that, Keith, uh, thinking in terms of broader sense, thank you also, Marcus. Is that there needs to be some education between the relating between SRO officers and students as well. Um, and so we think bigger in terms of how do you engage with students? How, how do students perceive you and have educating about the experience of the students? That's something that's part of the safety issue, that both sides come to a, a meaning to mind, a sense of understanding. Um, that we haven't, uh, for lack of a better word. We haven't attempted to do that because of, this is such an emotionally charged thing. And so the response is much more visceral than it is intentional and deliberative. And so that's where we need to be very thoughtful about how we engage multiple communities. We're still trying to understand each other, we're trying to learn each other. Um, and, 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 and think more broadly about how this works, but if that is sustainability. If we build relationships between people, that's much more sustainable. Than a single document that said, this is the language that's gonna change, right, with the MOU? Because they're not changing hearts and minds, and we must change hearts and minds. And the only way to do that is having people talk to each other, not just a single document that changes all, not that it will not, that's not a. Wow, thing, but there's something bigger that we must do in terms of the relating piece.
Yeah, I mean, the most beautiful, the most beautiful part of the process the last year was essentially, uh, the document is great, its great outcome is deliverable, the policy changed, yeah. A role in it, but the most beautiful process was watching, you know, students be pretty upfront and honest and straightforward with officers. About being able to just kinda speak their truth. At first, it was a little, they got a little nervous to start, but, I mean, you'll test. Once we are able, then once we're able to develop momentum, get them into sort of like rooms to talk with each other and sort of get like a same mentality. Then, I wish Chelsea was here, she did that, um. It was, it was pretty powerful stuff, and I will say, um, to watch students literally talk to a chief of police, like, he's just like, you know? They just say exactly what their mind is and what the problems are.
I would say not only do you have to change hearts and minds, you gotta change experiences with the people that you're with.
Yeah, yes.
So if you don't have experience, to have a different experience, and really have a relationship with folks, and you sit in, in, in our role. You're not able to see yourself in a different space, and so that was a part of it. The young people also expressed the need for the officer showing up with a uniform and a gun to the lead. That was triggering, right, and so how do we hold space? And we're talking about safety, you have a job to do, but we're trying to survive, so for them, they'd be able to dialogue about the impacts of that. How they wanna show up different, show up to our fans, going to show up when you're called and right, so the police wants to open your community, see us in different spaces. We wanna see you in different spaces, we're human beings, and how do we create that human interaction? That allows us to see each other and honor each other's humanity, right? That was a real critical element of the concept, I think, in, in, often times it's meant, but if you have a good economy, I don't know.
Yes, and Marcus, you're absolutely right, because that's part of the communication. And SRO officers must know that their engagement is not just limited to a time, snack, the bench, that allows violence. That the, their engagement must be part of, of just a normal interaction. And, and more of a community-oriented interaction, right? And when the students see that, they're more likely to engage, sorry.
And ownership.
And ownership.
Yeah, I have, I'm too. Participating in different stages of this whole dialogue. Even the years of being literally in foster with, as you students. Prior to the earth study, let's say not.
Yeah.
Um, with police department, the last breach. With, um, some of the holistic agencies that do this. And optimistic. I think we're in a good space. Where even police departments are recognizing that they've not had work to do, but have, they can do it. Uh, how they show up if they're facing a point. SRO officers are police officers, but in order for them to serve as SRO officers, they're the first one, they got volunteered, they have. This is what I wanted to do, and then they have to be trained to do that, which is different. Than the police, and so when we started having these conversations, now we're talking about intentionality. If I am an officer, if I am an officer, how do I show up to be affected in this design? This is an opportunity for it, and at the same time, we cannot discount. Historical impact of generations, but we also cannot be so cowardice. And we don't show up to bridge that gap.
Yes.
And what I mean by that, let's just talk turkey.
Yeah.
We've been here, I, I'm all very good. As an African American, who have their trauma. But because of that trauma, I cannot not show up to bridge the gaps to my grandchildren, you know? And we can deal with that ideologically, philosophically, or we can saddle up. And say, here are some sessions we need to remember to follow, because the truth of the matter is. I still make police barriers. But so, we can't drive by that systematically, this is called common, but we can, we'll bust it. Make some adjustments, enter into buy-in. And develop relational trust and equity to move forward. So we can't hide behind what we've been through, and we can't duck behind the curtain to keep it as it is. So now we have, take the day, be courageous. Come to the table, and ask how can we make this work as opposed to sugar. Um, and so optimistic, that's the root type. My experience is. The people, when like war, go to the path of police assistance, and we get comfortable on dogs. Uh, I also know that everybody looking at me in this space. Psychologically, emotionally, to do it. But I would challenge us to be courageous. And work with who's with me at this time. So we can leave those who are not ready there. Cannot leave, but those who are not ready there. You gotta be courageous, creative, committed, tracking. Honest. And I think the best is I think, and I say that, actually, I'm also talking specifically, because I'm trying to remove everybody's tab out. You will tap out, go for it, but be honest, while you tap out, don't hide the ice and love stuff. That, a merit to the people on both sides of that equation. A merit to the people on both sides of that equation. To tap out. People miss that. The offices are open and wise too. Every day they go to work, they don't look there coming home. Teachers are at least sometime. And I think. We are be ashamed of our students having.
And I think that also just as I heard you see that she's like. Because you sit in urgency, it's urgent for you, you're compelled and. And success and safety brings readiness, right? So if I start seeing my. Environment getting safer, that brings me ready to say, oh, they're they're doing something like this, let me get on board. Or if I could just be resistant, because it's safe in my house, I'm gonna stay in my house.
We're we're whom I'm comfortable. So applause would work. Applause for people who still get up. I'll just encourage you to be honest and transparent, let's talk about it. And let's figure out how we. What rate of.
How many you got?
About a year and a half.
But what I wish is, I wouldn't like this process that did respect or did honor that department.
I didn't, like I said, I don't know this, not anymore, I don't know this. It's gonna take what it takes. Let's talk about it. You all did a lot of this thing, great work um so. I'm not new to this work. I'm not new to this work, I'm not new to this community, I'm vested. I've seen it. I've been to the law, I've been to the brave side, I've been to the jail, I've been to the school, I've been in the school. When it's locked down. When it's violent. Not only with the students, but you with the teachers. So what are you going to do, shorten off and do what? Well, no, that's not like after violence in the bill. It was a work flat. That's real.
Fire freeze.
That's that's real. Ah so thank you, I appreciate you. I'm here for, I'm here for all of you.
I listen to you talk all day, man. I'm kidding, I'm just. I'm mesmerized, I'm mesmerized, I was like, oh my gosh. Thank you, I just want to say thank you, like from the bottom of my heart, you like, you like it.
And thank you for the opportunity to research. I mean, that's the part where if things get stuck in process, and we want to move beyond process, because we're dealing with young people on the staff. There it's on a daily basis.
Of course, about to get on the slide.
There's a loss in transition.
Yeah, that too. That's when we were here, when we started, we aren't here, so what happened, that's not my record.
So I appreciate.
I have another thing on to ask about when I looked at yours, uh third participant, did you have anybody that was not an English speaker?
Uh in the S E, in the actual S E C, the collaborative, um everyone, I we're un, I'm unaware of whether there was their, English was their first language or not. Uh but everyone spoke English in the group.
There was two that were English with the same language.
Yes, well, I guess to give, yeah, I guess. After there also is, I mean, we have a lot of new and rare refugees, so and and those folks frequently, you know, do not speak English at all. When they come and the problem is, or the issue is, they're maybe probably coming from a country where they've been textile or some sort of friend, they come away. And people in uniforms. That they come to this country, they don't know that they're not a century, but they come from a uniform company. You know, that's a problem, so we just need to, you know, keep in mind those sources as well, that we think about having.
Yeah, so well, this will just have this ridge sort of like.
Thank you, I appreciate it, as an immigrant, yeah, myself, you're absolutely right. Uh so the purpose here, we're here to further data. Uh understand where those photos are and try to build the bridge, right? That's.
But again, I just want to just be very clear that we're not saying that. We we certainly feel that we need to work on the S R O. What we're saying is that we cannot just make it just a one dimensional model, just with the M N U only. That we need to figure out how we can build those relationships in order to move forward.
Thank you, that was good.
Thank you again.
What I'm wondering, you need about is um uh so we will probably say another chapter in the week uh between several times. I would love if another board member is really interested in participating in um the conversation that we're having with the team directly. Um but I'm wondering if maybe at our board retreat, that'll be at least in January. Um maybe use that if they're available as opportunity to come in and start thinking about another final one recently mentioned. Um uh that's kind of, I think, the first next step if they. Well, maybe those three things, our last meeting, one was identify key players, are meaningful to me to be present and involved in the conversation. And then coupon, then this next one is uh sending our employees, and there was third one, it's in my list. I don't, um uh so because the two next steps are coming in places with their, we have next year. Okay, um alright, so we have a few actually, I know I said before we begin, um you read through. Uh there are questions, but I also think this is like a really beginning, I don't think I can remember exactly what we had, we saw a movie, so this is not normal. I pulled our A thirty, and yeah, they they, we all believe this is not the case, definitely having crap this much. Okay, uh so first one is a no representation of the floor, um this is something that we do every year, this is annual piece. So where we um nominate the president of the board, vice president of the board, and then.
So the process does come with the nomination for the president. And that person was nominated must. The nominee that. Once the person is nominated and that is the nomination, they're doing the votes. We'll call it. They will bond to the vice president case.
Wait, are there any nominations? For what president?
Well, all nominated, Director Hoover, President.
Director Hoover, you've been nominated, you knew inside.
We must, they were Director Cocker, Bill Strong, Senator. I know, it was hard enough, um. We made that one off, because the app, I like that the nomination.
As far as saying hi, I agree.
Yes, I agree.
Do I go too? Well, yeah, um yes. Um uh Eric Cocker. And yours. Okay, um. No, just kidding, I'm I'm honored to continue to to serve that class and also welcome anyone who's interested in thinking about what they want. Uh for next year, um okay, so uh. We've been operating recently with very large energy, with our our line of rap and. Our vice uh by our government, um and and I don't want to depress their, their view um to. Set into my personal role and at the same time, if you're willing, I think it would be valuable to. Spread out the responsibility a little bit, um so. Generally, I would love if there was um. If it was a different person, not on which you roll, that there would be a little bit more um uh. Involvement um to have a playtime agenda, setting meetings um with me, um but ultimately, it's 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 supporting the board when the president is not available. Um to the chair meeting, um again, I think, you know, ideally, they all would be a, yeah. They'd also be a, you know, ideally, I I'd love someone who can sort of like. Participate in some of those additional pieces with me as well.
If I can do.
I I agree with um Carly, it's just better to spread things out, I mean, I can do it again. If you do, I mean, and we can, I mean, this is an annual thing, but you know, if we get six months in and one of you feels like you can take it on, then obviously, so.
Before I, before I can, I think so.
Accept the nomination.
I accept the nomination.
It's wonderful when we're starting over here again.
Except I will say this.
Okay, uh yes, for me?
Definitely.
And yes.
Be excellent.
Don't worry, um okay, great, uh so next is the, um it's gonna be a couple of policy number two four two one. Uh which is promotion retention. Okay, a second.
Second.
Okay, uh any questions, Congress? Okay, all in favor of approval, may I? Great, it is approved, um next is a pool of human resources staff report.
Second.
Uh all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I forgot to ask the questions, Congress. And now it's our pleasure to be with them later, okay, uh it is approved. Uh next is a pool of the resolution number nine four zero of the Interfund Loan.
Second.
Second, um.
Yeah, so it's on. So the estimates for future. I suspect, um so the way I understand the way we get finance is that. Uh so both of our our financing comes from B E J dollars, B portion of dollars. Um and the portion of dollars. For November, December. Are based upon. Um the student development. And if we don't get, if we don't get.
It's our, it all has increased. Number to December, the portionment is based on. The budget for the year and screwed up in January.
Yeah, so based on lower development dummy. So I think, I think this particular one is under understanding what our revenue stream is going to be because. We've got a significant increase in. In students beyond what was, but.
The uh. Uh two years ago to last year, we dropped three point five million. And that grew from the entire year, you would think that three point five million to three point seven million would be more considerable. I'm using three million to include the higher. Enrollment count and. For action to be taken on things that we can't. At this point, this is a stretch to get to. For the for the full year.
Let's start to get to.
Yeah, to the ending balance of four point three negative fund balance. Work has to be done to get to that, including the uh increase in enrollment that we've. Already seen.
So you're saying you included an increase in enrollments. For January?
Uh in uh. Uh September, October and November, then it grew up sixty five, so it's a budget. Around there.
So you included that. In this, in this. Forecast?
It's not a forecast. Oh, oh.
Can you come out?
Yeah, the 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 other, the. The direction was forecasted in February, this is a chart showing what is likely to happen based on. Assumptions at the bottom of the page, which I just listed.
Yeah.
Sounds like a forecast.
Uh yeah, I think we were trying to stay away from the word forecast.
Well, this is what. Your best estimate of what's gonna happen, given assumptions.
Uh my best estimate is right now four point five negative. Work has to happen to get to this.
You said best is four point five negative?
At this point, yeah.
And you're showing out here four point three negative.
Correct, it's it's an assumption that's taking a three million dollar. Uh reduction month over month. And if you took the average of September, October. Representatives prior year, that's three million one thousand.
I guess. Suppose, you know, I I think. I'm not sure that we're locking this sort of proposal, supposedly approved at a three million dollars instead of four million dollars, what would that do? And if we had to come back later and go up more.
Hmm three, three million would get us to the end of December, we'd have a special session so that we. Uh could get through January.
So you could get through January with only three?
Uh right now it's projected at three point five million and there's some variation in there, as as we talked before. For the people that have been here, uh there 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 was a withholding of invoices. Uh throughout uh the latter half of last year at a minimum. That have been processed more recently, so we're we're still trying to get a baseline of what our expenditures are.
We got.
Uh yeah, there was, there was a feeling that we talked about in the work session that that uh. Uh there was a fear that if we paid these invoices, that we wouldn't make payroll. It was it was false. We're backed by the state, the King County automatically gives us money. All vendors get paid. Everybody gets their paycheck. But. That's the truth, there was there was a falsity out there. Invoices, especially the larger ones. It was a scramble. Finding them of. When, 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 when I got here. And and it was all hands on deck.
Yeah.
Are we pretty confident those are all played in care at this point?
Yeah.
There's, 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 there's still, there's still out there, it's hard to change culture. But we probably have at least ninety percent of the old ones. Uh but we're still, and some of it is position related. Uh uh we have uh uh some of our special education invoices, which are large. That we're still looking for. And and that that's because the position is is taken at this point. We've gone through, we've called the the vendors. Uh we we've called people that might have these on their desk. And then as we repeat that several times, we find, oh yeah, hey, there is some, so we're 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 getting cleaned up. It's one of the control points that we put in place immediately that.
Yeah, and we are cleaning them all.
And there's a. And also in these challenges, that is a lot.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it is a big um discovery.
Yeah.
And it uh we uh the the good news is. I think we have the right people and um. I believe it's just gonna take, I will be honest, it'll take, it's the genuine coach, it's a big part of the work, right? Um even with all the, also with our partners, for example, I'll just say, uh as an example. A lot of contractize, right?
A lot of contract strike, or like just thinking about our school program, I'm just gonna use that as an example. Um in the past, that was, you know, schools, that relationships, that things were developed. And now we're looking at all of that, and we're going, whoa, 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 delete one of those partnerships, takes individual M U, takes individual cost. And then we're analyzing it based on members of students served, duplicate of services, you know, all of these things. And that was the first thing, we just looked at every external contract, and that's one of the things that the teaching and learning stuff is actually kind of getting there. That uh that's what, we are revisiting all of it and reanalyzing all of it, so yeah, it was a huge undertaking. Um special education, our expenditures, I'll just give an example, uh one thing we learned is, for example. Um there's a, there's a reimbursement called safety net, uh for example, for those that are non-public agencies. Learning that we probably under um under requested money for reimbursement. We are now course correcting that for the last two years. Um and actually, the amount that we requested was around four hundred thousand dollars, or actually, it was a million, so that's we're course correcting our special. Directors, course correcting all of that, working with the state and making sure we actually look, what is the process for appealing, even for that uh that year at least. Request, so we're actually looking for every term of revenue, where we can get our reimbursements appropriately. Um also um revisiting all of our external and internal contracts. And which will be one part of the problem, but then the long term is the s- the appropriate staffing. That we need to have to provide the adequate services and the support to students and maintain. What we need to be to support them, and so all of those things are coming more because we're not done, but so we're. We're just, we're just be working, but I believe we have the right people. And reminder that Greg came on board in October, so I believe we have, I came on board in July, you know. Andre came on board in September, uh I believe we have, and Scott came on board, I think in the middle, so I think we're all in this. That everyone's aware of the issue, everyone's looking at their department budgets, everyone's. And then the 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 hard part for us is really being committed and holding the line, because of course. Um, culture is harder to change, you know, knowing just that positive experiences, what we're telling people know a lot, and that's hard to do.
Yeah, I had some, 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 some coaching as well. Uh we're we're teaching leaders how how to, how to uh uh receive requests. Or whatever it might be, it's it's general resources, can I borrow somebody's time, can I spend some more money? Can we do another contract? There there was a time when, yes, of course.
Yeah.
There was a time when it was yes, of course, and they they were entering into their own contracts without going through.
Yeah.
Uh Conci decide, Conci and I can sign contracts, nobody else can. And I I will not sign a contract, it's only constant, so we're we're claiming that, the part of that is. When people come to the board. They generally have a request for resources. The board can set a tone. That will filter down, because our employees are a mirror of ourselves, they're all leaving it back.
Yeah, so then my question is, I think you better ask. So if we, I'll read the resolution, so we. About the resolution to ask for made in the autumn. And we're already met with, I mean, by President Charlie, basically, what's the worst the other side of us? The first is rather, you're on a call to pay the ball, and what happens? If you can get.
Great question. And that 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 is, that is the 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 right question, so uh for for those that are 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 new.
Yes, you all pay, you came in October, you did, I didn't get it, fine.
So uh we we have different funds, it it's 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 kind of weird, we have our general fund. And and we're asking for a levy for that, we have a capital fund, and we're asking for a renewal levy on that as well. Within the rules, we can borrow from the capital levy, so that that's where we're getting our four million dollars. Your other question is how do we we repay that loan, and that is. Primarily through the number of people that work here, our infrastructure. It has to be reduced not only to what it was three years ago. But because we have fewer students. And we have to pay back the loan, and we don't have a third one. Those people cost more today, they cost more than inflation, is a rate twenty five than inflation. So we have to have a slimmer infrastructure, the board needs to take a lead on this. Because if Conci approves this, my concern is that there will be a vote of no confidence.
And Conci approves what?
If if Conci comes to you and says. And 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 it's good, we we know about where we need to cut. And and for easy math, you can say we're four million dollars and say that a physician costs an average of a hundred thousand, it's less than that. To reduce by seniority, you can come up with the math. If Conci came with a proposal. In all likelihood, there would be a vote of no confidence. Conci needs the board. Who empower her to recommend the reductions that are needed. And every day away. It just takes more to pay back that loan.
Well, first of all, the board has never um. Uh voted against any recommendation terms to pretend that it came on May fifteenth, this will be clear from the past. And the second is, you know, the board doesn't have that opportunity until May fifteenth. Unless unless you're coming some other recommendations in the interim to lay off some people that don't have yearly contracts, so.
I I think so, with these two, and and we talked about this before in our initial letter, we have one of the reasons why we we signed it together. Is is really ensure that we are cooperating fully on all our decisions that are made, so that. Keep current federalism following, particularly our people in the end, right, because. We are here to bear the brunt of some of that, I'm sorry, I wonder if if we, actually, that that's not the whole of it, there are really just, you know, being. Vocal to a degree about, you know, the the how, dealing with it, right, um. Yeah.
Thank you. A resolution as they do May fifteenth, they give a resolution allowing superintendent to. Authorize connection forces, right, and I know that it's around, you said, a. Non-contracted people, couldn't have a resolution that was important, that existed, that would show empowerment from the board.
Well, do we get a recommendation?
Yeah, yeah, I would say, particularly coming out of our budget, we're testing and gambling very, we felt like that was something. That that was the direction we need to go to, then leader, um then I I I mean, I think. Right now, we have an obligation, we have to. Ensure that we get back on track, right, whatever that looks like, so I mean, yes, um. Yeah, the one question I'm curious about too is.
With, what can we talk about, what can we explain? But I'd like to see. To track what the plan.
Yeah.
Of the staff reduction. What the projected actuals are. Not just. This amount of people seem like it need this deadline, or if 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 you're reducing by this percentile. And the the in this area affects this, and this is what this is gonna look like. Otherwise, it's not worth the heat, you can tell.
Yeah, but there's things you can do in it.
I think one of the challenges is not just market share. Um is that you gotta have errors to figure out what's right.
Yeah.
And do that, as opposed to what's expedient, because it costs more and lower.
But for example, if the product at Cascade View, a staff, of course, staff even before May fifteen is a hiring increase. You know, the any positions that we just have a hiring increase, and so that's a conversation we have to have, and that can happen sooner than later, right? Um and I'm not saying that for example, you know, the specialists who do that need something that of course, but. We're talking a general hiring increase for other physicians, and so. There's things that we can do also now currently that won't affect production force yet, right, those types of things, so there's. Those are things we are talking about, um travels, a riff date, right, I mean, not riff date, but uh uh. Uh we're uh, the day of, how do you know? Furlong, furlong, sorry.
Yeah, and that was none of that, I just won't put that up in the yield that you're paying.
Yeah.
You're the same.
Yeah, I think I am, I am a little bit curious about, you know, we are very love to. Ask for a levy, how might it look if we are, have spent. You know, at this point, I think we've taken loads from the levy before. Um so then therefore, those monies, so right now, we're being, we're not able to fix the dry system at Cascade View. Because we don't have the money to do that, um so I mean, I'm just curious if there's been any thought to that, or any, if we have any. Uh anything that might give us some idea about how, if in fact, let's be able to pass the levy. Because that would be even more significant to our district, if we could have passed that levy.
Uh. We have had. Numerous, numerous conversations. On 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 that and and then, without saying what those are, you can probably imagine what those conversations were.
As far as, as far as negative, I'm assuming, this is not anything, I mean, I I like the meaning to it as a whole thing, just give it to me straight.
Should we go into closed session?
Or we can. Probably go into a closed session, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about, but you.
This needs to be.
Be a special meeting.
We we can do it for five minutes, an hour, ten minutes, and we can be candid.
Okay. I'll be calling a closed session as a president, hold on, Mr. Clear the room.
Hold on.
A a budget conversation.
Is that allowable?
Because we, you, we did that when I first got here.
No, but I don't wanna do it, I wanna set the time, that's a lot of more than five or ten minutes, I'd like to have a longer time to to get through this, but.
Do you have the retreat?
No.
I mean, do you want to do it for the linear, or is January, January, okay, so we're not, that's already on your agenda or your plan? For January, and we can build in to that, or check our application, close session, we can go back in to that, um. Yeah.
Last president since, is that, we don't know this stuff.
Yes.
Asking you to make some. It's irresponsible, I mean, so I I appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to it, for the whole House to make it. If if on the city, uh and like I said, we should levy. I wasn't sure if you're talking about putting one on the ballot, or there was one, everything access wants to, because. In basic math, levies are hard. Um particularly as a primary solution, and that'll lead to people going different, but. When I say basic math, I mean, this will be bad, I mean, in the context of. If you even miss manage money, Dr. Seaver, coming to the twelve month. Where we're at, right, when I'm saying I'm all over, in here, and I gotta go for the letter, it tells me to pay more miles, that I'm paying for. And you you could say, if we were just talking about basic, you know, that I need to fix these lots and. And then there's more money to fix the lots. So I just, you know, we have to make sure we have things in the road before. So I appreciate you, I, when we met the other day, I was like, who, so. And these are just challenges, right?
Yes, yes, and 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 you 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 know, you know, concerns we had when we discussed. The the levy, the the inter fund loan.
Yes.
Uh we require board approval, but the board has no alternative except to approve the inter fund loan. It's a requirement that we do not have a negative ending fund balance, you can't see by the chart, we have been in violation of. Having a negative.
And so that's, this is a requirement, as you said, getting loans from. To cover, I mean, we're already, you know, negative on the back end, essentially.
Yes, we.
And they're charging us what?
Uh last I heard, it was two percent.
Two percent, which is what we're, you're saying, you're charging the same if we.
And from what I understand, the rule is whatever King County's rate is, is the rate that that we charge ourselves.
So why wouldn't we just take the loan and be counting that as our capital projects? So that we could actually do things like fix the dry system and cascade you for the whole building public car.
I don't think that's in the rules, and and then we can have O S P I confirm that.
I think I would agree with Mr. Arson. I was gonna see if that's, if that's a.
We we we. We're we're listening, we're we're buying. Uh we've been assigned uh a representative from P S E S T. Who has told us we need an inter fund loan.
He what?
He has told us we need an inter fund loan because we're in violation, so. There's no penalty against it. But I don't think that this board wants to. Break a rule like that.
Yeah, but yeah, the rules are always.
It's a balance too, right, because if the conference said that they offered to do that, then we have our, and then we pass, because they. It's like, what, yeah, I look, I I wonder, if I'm gonna make a proposal. If we could bounce that question specifically about the loan from King County, and if you think it's reasonable?
It's 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 uh. It's it's not an option, it will be in January, and.
You said it will be?
Uh we we uh the next time we meet will be in January, and we have to pull up.
I know, we could, I feel like we could very realistically, if you came back to us and said. We have to have three, the three or four million dollars, King County has said that's not an option, then I think we could go a special meeting and do a vote in five minutes.
King, King. King County is covering our cash shortfall. They make sure that we cover payroll, they make sure that we pay our 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 vendors, that's their job. Their job is not to load us alone, so that we can have. Extra money. We're required to have an inter fund loan. So that we have an ending fund balance that is above zero.
But the question is, what's the cost of that, so if the longer term cost of that is. You know, I mean, ultimately, the goal was to get out of this financial burden that we're in. And we started making decisions like we're gonna delay some uh, this, you know, some maintenance at a building. That's gonna cost us more in the long run, how is that, oh, I think. And I don't know, that's, I mean, I don't know that the dry system, the cascade view, I mean. Do do the over under on when that's gonna break, you know, the next month, I don't know.
Or or when it looks.
We had it insured to get it, right? So, yeah, you know.
And then I guess I think the the requirement is that we own our, we're so, and then we fund balance, the negative one next month, and we won't have one during the fall. So, right?
Uh the inter fund loan is is for one year. And as required. And as required that we pay, pay back in, in one year. We took out the loan last February that needs to be repaid this coming February. So you know, like, we're going to need another interim fund loan to cover that loan, and to get us through the spring.
So basically, you tell us we have zero choice, yeah?
There, 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 there is no choice. We have another loan coming from last February, that's coming up on this February, and we still need to get through this fiscal year. To the end, I mean, it's, yeah, very.
Is it motion time? So, in the loop, uh information that was presented to us. The resolution that's on the table, it sound like we need to uh. We just, we got, we go through both, we have to say, that's our choice. That's, yeah, that's kind of disheartening, but if, if it's, if, and I, and I believe what you're telling me. You're active, uh. President, I think it's, question on tables, are we prepared to move within the rules on what we. Sustain while we have time to figure a rest and step out, and show it turn B and turn the long term.
Yeah, Director, you, you've been on the board, and I'm going to refer you, and you've seen this before, or seen. For stuff before, and the proposal you brought up, is that, is, do you see no other? Is there any other things that have been done in the past, or anything that we can see or look that, that has any presence or help towards making something? I have another solution, or is there an option, or are we just looking at kind of the, the writing on the wall?
Yeah, pretty much, I mean, my only question was, you know, since we're gonna get, you know, we've had an increase in enrollment. But, you know, fair saying, you worked that into this, it wasn't fair to be that was worked into this.
Are you?
It's almost already in there, so, um, you know, I was originally going to close reducing this maybe to three million, but. If that's already worked in there, then, yeah, I, I don't, you know, I, I, I kind of questioned the whole. Logic of the system, but, but we are, we got a system that we have, and so, um, and as long as we're working really hard on. Trying to, you know, come up with reductions and, and other ways, then I'm okay with.
Is it enough? I mean, is this what we're, what we're asking for enough?
No, but it's all that we have.
Well, we actually have six million dollars in that week.
Uh some, some of that's committed, and uh. We, we have a payroll that's, that, that we charge to, to the tech lobby.
And for the medical.
We're, we're, we're going to be unpeeling the onion, uh we'll, we'll be unpeeling an onion that, that uh, you know.
This is years in the making, it's complex, and we have to.
That is a movie.
Yeah.
It's like, okay, we keep doing it, we keep doing it, you know.
We can't, we can't, we cannot, we can't have different people in place, so it's not gonna be that, um. Yeah, yeah, at, at least that.
And I will say, in the order of things, saying this letter that I have to the legislature, we're not everyone wants in this, in this. Situation, there's been more districts that are going on a lot of this year than ever before.
There's already four, and then I just heard from O S P, there's four more coming up soon, and mostly smaller districts. Yeah, I know, no, I won't be stopping there, it's a day, yeah, I've heard quite many, I haven't been working. Okay, so like, all the same, you're, you're being in a final one, um, that.
I have one thing, though, before I say my hi, on, on this, real, I want to be super crystal clear on what I did, um. I won't do this again, I won't say hi again, so the other loan or anything else, until we have a clear path going forward. Of how we're going to get out of this, I understand that I'm, I'm stuck and bound this time, but I think. Moving forward, let's just get a plan in place that beyond this board, beyond who's here, that this district is gonna be too.
All right, is approved, we'll be sort of, uh, in a conversation, all right, um, next is approval of the, of the vehicle. So, uh, any discussion, question?
It hasn't run since before I got here, the first, the, the, the former superintendent used it, she lived in Michigan. Uh she moved here, she was using the vehicle, it just stalled out on the side of the road, it was towed to the transportation. Uh or, and it's just stayed there ever since.
Okay, and the last is approval of a levy protocol committee members. Uh any discussion, questions?
I was, I was looking at, I'm sure what this is about.
So, uh, we, we, we have the, the two renewal levies on the ballot for. Uh February, uh King County, and when you, when you see your voter's registration packet, you can read through. And the school district has an explanatory uh statement saying, this is what we're going to use the money for, and this is the amount. Down below, sometimes you see a group that writes a full statement.
Yes.
Or a pro statement.
Yes.
These are the three people that, that volunteered to write that statement. Sometimes you see somebody writing a statement against. Those would be the on. Statements, writers. No, nobody has volunteered to write a. Something against us.
Right.
The next, uh, and then I'll be quiet, you know, the next step is I submit all the documents to King County, I'll do that in the morning. King County posts everything on their special election website. Where members can reach out and say, I want to be, I, I want to write a statement against. So right now, there's nobody saying that they're against it, but there's still a period of time, I think it's seven or ten days. Where somebody can uh write a statement.
Thanks all of your approvals. All right, um, it's the end of group then. Okay, that brings us to our last opportunity to public comment. Only just a couple of seconds, if there's anything on one, with offers and comments, and also recognizing it's nine thirty. So if you have thoughts, please definitely send the review. You know, to officially adjourn our meeting, give your motion. Hi, we are adjourned, officially, we are adjourned.
So if there's anybody who wants to stick around, just talk more about what we just talked about on here.